Our member of the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately under the public hearing agenda. City Des Moines is pleased to provide accommodations to individuals or groups with disabilities and encourages participation in city government. To better serve you when possible, please notify us at least three business days in advance at area code 515-2834-209 should special accommodations be required. Assistant listening devices are also available for meetings in the council chambers although you won't be here. Planning and zoning commission meetings are broadcast on MediaCom Cable Channel 7 for customers with that service. The broadcast is streamed live in real time on City Des Moines website at www.demoynggov.org. You need to click on the "Watch Live" link and like I said, we'd like you to be here if it's all possible. Do we have a quorum? Kathy? All right. A quorum being present. Everybody had a chance to look at the minutes. Any additions or corrections? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I move.
It's moved by Christine. Got it? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. One abstention. It's Ted. Two abstentions. Dorian. You good? All right. I'm going to take up the consent portion of our agenda for tonight. The request from Diversity Insurance represented by Juan Rodriguez to rezone property located at 1533 and 1541 East Grand Avenue. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to those items? In opposition to those items, anyone? Anybody have a question as to whether or not that's an item you're considering? All right. Seeing none. Is there anyone on the commission want to remove that item? All right. Item number two is request from La Fredo Gardens, Inc., represented by Eugene La Fredo to rezone property located at 4001 Southwest 63rd Street. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to that item? In opposition that would want it removed? Seeing none? Any commissioners? Jack, you want it removed or?
Mr. Hopper, are you here in opposition to that item?
I was here originally to listen and see what they had to say and would we respond to that if that was going to happen.
There is nothing said unless it's removed from the consent agenda. So I'll ask that it be removed.
All right.
But I'll have to abstain from proceeding.
Item number three is request from Drake University represented by Deborah Newsom for review and approval of an amendment to Drake University Recreation PUD Conceptual Plan affecting property located at 142026th Street to allow an approximate 31,000 square feet basketball practice facility addition to the east side of the NAP Center. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to that item? In opposition to that item? Seeing none, any commissioner want it removed? Okay. Item number four is request from Ingersoll Square Two Investments LLC represented by Robert Caluzzi for review and approval of an amendment to the Ingersoll Square Two site plan under design guidelines in NPC districts to allow development of 38 additional off-street parking spaces as part of the existing 63-unit multiple-family dwelling. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to that item tonight? In opposition to the item? Seeing none, is there a commissioner wanting it removed? Any commissioners? Okay. Thank you. Before we move on, is there anyone here who doesn't know whether or not the first four items are something you're here on? All right. Is there a motion?
No.
Moving consent? Okay. Any discussion?
Except for item three?
Except for item three. We're going to remove one. I'm sorry, two. One, two. I'm sorry, one, three and four.
Was there any consideration of eight or is that?
Um, I didn't get that impression.
Okay.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Acclamation, Kathy. Jack, you're going to vote on this though, right? Because it's one, one, three.
Yes.
And you're in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. All right. We're going to go ahead and take up item number two. But before we get to that, I want to back up a minute here. Before we get to that, I'm just trying to get an idea as to how many people here are on item number, item number six. If I could get a raise of hands. Okay. And those who are here on item number eight. All right. I'm going to swap that around. We're going to move six to the end and we're going to move seven and eight up, just so everybody knows. There are also, as I understand it, item number five has been withdrawn.
Yes.
Okay. Is anyone here on item number five, which is a request from Clear Channel Outdoor? If you're here on that item, that has been withdrawn. Okay. Thank you. Eric, you're going to present on item number two, sir?
Yes. Item two is a rezoning request that would revise the land that you see here located at Southwest 63rd, just south of Watrous Avenue. This is the existing La Fredo Fresh Produce Company facility, warehouse and offices. They're looking at possible expansion of their site. They own this property in the hatched area. There has been an extension of parking into this area in accordance with the existing PVP plan. This area to the south is the Boy Scouts Mid-Iowa Council's headquarters facility that's fairly new in that neighborhood. We're talking about basically four acres within this rectangular area. The overall site would be about 11.8 acres. A little bit of history on this area in terms of when it became zoned as it is. It was R-180 at one time in 1995. Both property to the south and the La Fredo property were rezoned under separate actions. When La Fredo's site was rezoned to M1, one of the conditions was that the balance of the land be rezoned to PVP. And then within a year's time, basically, that rezoning was forthcoming at a later point in the year in 1995. And then most recently was amended in 2008 under the Cornerstone Church PUD concept or PVP concept. And that included the consideration of this area for the Boy Scout facility as well and involved a plat which created a street connection to the south and some other recent development. So La Fredo has acquired this piece of property and does want to look at the options. What you should know from a physical standpoint here is there's some great difference here. The existing site is built up above and so there's this lower area that kind of drains to the east a bit. So anything that they would do to expand within this area with any buildings, right now they're talking around a 45,000 square foot facility.
Eric, let me back you up a second. The original agreement was that we were going to grant the M1 for La Fredo if this particular portion would be PVP?
That a large portion to the south. It was all actually owned once in common.
I understand, but the agreement was we would grant the M1 in exchange for PVP zoning for this?
Well, yeah, it was a rezoning, so they agreed to conditions that would have made that stipulation. And then that-
So why are they coming back now and asking for a change of that?
That was nearly 20 years ago.
So why are they coming back now and asking for a change of that?
Because I just told you, they're looking into making expansion of their site.
All right.
Yes. They want the same zoning as their existing site, so they don't, you know, I guess the other route they could take is to rezone to a PUD. I think they're proposing a simple expansion which would involve one, one large building. I think the big thing, if you look at the intent of PVP is to get an arrangement of streets and so forth. If you look in that page 97 of the, of the Des Moines 2020 Community Character Plan, it kind of describes the PVP typology, but I've also described it in the staff report. Since this is just a little sort of minimal expansion, even though it's four acres, it's fairly minimal relative to the site area. They are seeking a cohesive zoning of M1. And from the staff perspective, in order to sort of stay in conformance with the PVP land use, future land use idea for this area, we believe that the architecture and design has to be in keeping with the business park intent for the PVP future land use designation. And so the conditions that we are going to recommend here would involve ensuring that the, the development would include architecture that's compatible with the existing building. Right now you're looking, this would be along the north wall. So this would be if you were this tip of the pen looking to my, to the right of the picture down the north wall. That's this view here. So the, the back portion is more of an industrial type building. This is actually an addition that was made later and they can even describe it better for you probably, but this is a different exterior material, but it's been treated to match the original building which was a tilt-up. So if you look at it from the backside, which this is, this would be from the south looking at the loading area, it's a precast building, basically. These are precast walls that are painted. Then if you look at the front, it's more of an office level. This is metal, architectural metal panels. And then this is an EFIS type or a stucco board treatment here for these accents on the front of the offices. So architecturally, it's really in keeping in the same theme that you would see in the airport commerce park area to the north, which a portion is also PVP and also some of it is PUD. But again, the idea under the, if you look at the Community Character Plan, is that you want to maintain the business park theme. So we're recommending that the uses be those only found in the planned business park zoning as a condition. We're wanting to make sure that they're not looking to put additional access points onto Southwest 63rd or towards the east. So we would ensure that any access for this development on this land to be added would include, only come off of Watrous Avenue. And then we want to ensure that any development be compatible with the design of the existing warehouse and office facility to include precast concrete panels, metal panels with no exposed fasteners and glass with stucco panels used only as accent material. So that's what we're recommending at this point. We did get the one, the one communication was passed along from the east. One of the things I should point out is, again, getting back to the topography, is there will be requirements under the building code if they do a fairly large building that they separate a significant distance from that south property line because they would go to what's considered an unlimited area building which would require about a 60-foot setback under the building code. Right now, M1 would require a minimum of 25 feet to that. So I think the building code's actually going to be more restrictive than the zoning. Need questions?
Eric, I'm trying to figure out what, what benefit does it get moving it to M1 from PVP if they're going to get all the uses for PVP and they don't get any additional uses? I, I just, I'm confused.
Well, from their perspective, you're, you're trying to figure out what their motivation is to just-
Well, I'm not looking for their motivation. I'm just trying to see what the benefit to them is to move it from PVP to M1 if they're going to get the same thing.
Well, they don't have to go through the, the same conceptual plan approval, design under a PVP that you would have to have, so.
So they don't have to come back to us then?
Well, they wouldn't have to come back to you anyway if it was PVP, but what they would have to do is have a more significant front-end investment to do the conceptual plan for the PVP. They would have to still go through the trouble of rezoning their existing site PVP because it would be split-zoned and have a more restrictive zoning that would dictate. So I think they're, it's probably more of a timing issue and they've already got a predominance of M1 ground here. There's really no benefit under the intent of PVP in terms of getting the right street layouts and that type of thing. So it's probably simpler for them to, to take this approach.
Thank you. Any other questions? Is the applicant here?
Yes, we have some-
Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
Rick Baumover here from Bishop.
I think Mike-
Yeah. Eric, did we have any comments from the airport on height hazard?
Not at this time, but if they did a development plan, so when they would do their site plan, they would have to go through all the proper channels for all their stormwater engineering, height and hazard review for the airport. It is in proximity to an area that's considered protected for that, so.
So we currently don't have a condition addressing that necessarily, but-
It's a requirement anyway, yeah. So, yeah, under the site plan review, that would be, even, even their construction cranes have to get permits if they're using cranes in that area temporarily.
Thank you.
Anything else? If we could have the applicant come forward, please give us your name and address. We have a sign-in sheet, Eric. We're going to ask that you sign in.
Yeah, go ahead. I can write your name. Okay, thanks. Rick Baumover with Bishop Engineering 3501, 104th Street in Urbendale, representing La Fredo Fresh Foods. This project came about because of La Fredo's needs to find some room to expand their production in their facilities, looking to try to find room for about a 30,000 or 40,000 square foot building. So we're just in the concept planning stage and looked at this piece of property, which you asked a question earlier about when, why did they sell the land under one zoning and now went back? Well, they just more recently, probably within the last eight years, purchased this north strip of land, which was an outlot in that PVP plan. They wanted to do some parking expansion and so they ended up buying the whole outlot from that plat in order to do this parking addition. And that was fine at that time. Now, we're, we're looking to find room to do a building addition and the first thing we see is we have mixed zoning on here. And the question, there's some other things in the PVP about color of the building, building materials, you know, enhanced landscaping, parking berms and assortment of things that if we want to change or ask to be changed, either we go through, you know, the normal process or with the M1 or through the BVP process. And talking with staff, staff recommended that we get this rezoned as M1 so we have similar zoning and so then as we move forward, it's a, it's a more easier thing to accomplish. As I understand, there's not too many PVP park, planned business parks in Des Moines and so they're a little, I don't know, not a lot of experience of how it works to amend the guidelines in those parks. So following staff's recommendation, we're here to, to get it zoned M1 so that we have unified zoning on our property.
We understand you have the same restrictions as PVP on your M1 property.
For the land use, but there's things such as, and such as setbacks. The setbacks are, are different. M1 has, what's the side yard setback on M1 is like, I think the side yard on M1 is almost zero or five feet and the PVP it was 25 feet.
On that particular PVP?
On this particular PVP, yes. Building materials, we're fine with matching our building with what we're doing. We just thought it made sense to go ahead and get one zoning so we understood the setbacks and requirements that we had on our existing space would follow, follow along in the additional space.
Okay, when we're talking about the setbacks, you're talking about from the property line, there's no, it's zero, zero property line building? Is that what you're hearing?
For M1?
Yeah.
Yeah, the side yard setback on M1. Correct me if I'm mistaken.
Well, if it's up against a PVP, it's 25. So I'm in M1.
So you've still got a 25-foot setback on the area if we rezone it to M1?
Okay.
But, but like I, like I indicated, the unlimited building is going to be even more-
Right, right.
Probably about a 60-foot setback.
Okay. Shirley, just, okay.
I guess we looked at it as more of a, as a cleanup action, trying to make all of our zoning one on the property that they originally owned all of this. Yes, they sold the property off, became the PVP. Like I said, about eight, 10 years ago, they bought that four-acre strip back in order to build that parking lot expansion. At that time, it was already, that was, the PVP park process was in, was already going. I don't think, know it had been exactly approved, but it was already in the works. And so they acquired that property in order to build their parking. And so, yeah, we're left here today with, they acquired this property back with a different zoning and just looking to get it rezoned back.
Anything else?
No.
Any questions? Thank you.
Welcome.
We're going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? In favor of the application? Please come forward. Seeing none, anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? Come forward, give your name and address. You need to sign in as well.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Bob Hopper, 35 Broderick Drive in Waukee. I'm the CEO of Mid-Iowa Council Boy Scouts of America. And we are not here tonight to, I guess, directly oppose what our, our neighbors, La Fredo, choose to do with their property. We certainly are concerned about what is the outcome if the rezoning happens. We were surprised when we received the notice. We saw a, a meeting with La Fredo and had a very, very good meeting with their people last week. They mentioned to us that they want to clean up their, their zoning. We think that's an appropriate thing to do. They've also mentioned that it would be expensive for them to build on that, that site. Don't see that happening. We just want to know if it happens, then, then what will be the, the expectations of the landscaping, of the building materials? And will that indeed be in keeping with what we believe we provided the community at the Fred Maytag II Scout Center? We're investing a lot of effort in natural territory and prairie restoration facility for thousands of scouts and families and community groups to, to use that facility. Naturally, we're interested in making sure that that is maintained as well as possible. So I rise tonight and appreciate your time, not to say that we are in direct opposition. We're just concerned about this and I think this is also echoed by other neighbors that we don't want to tell our neighbors, we want to be good neighbors. We don't tell our neighbors what they can and can't do. We want to cooperate with them, make sure that this is the best outcome for, for, for everybody involved.
Thank you. Anyone here to, questions? Thank you. Eric, can you address those concerns?
Mr. Chair, I'm going to correct myself. It is zero, as he had indicated. If it was a residential use within that, it would be 25. So one thing that the commission could do is add a condition on setback. The other thing I should point out is it's still subject to M1 standards for open space landscaping materials. If you wanted to upgrade that.
It's in landscape enhancement corridor, so it's a C2.
It's actually not on the landscape enhancement corridor, is it?
Scout Rec says it is.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. It's, I'm mixing it up with one of the other items. The, the C2 are in effect, so if there's a desire, that, that actually doubles the amount of material that would normally be required for M1 districts. The other thing that might be involved here is a retaining wall that would be oriented towards the, the Maytag Scout Center. So if there's some desire as to how that would be handled from a design perspective, you could put a condition on that as well. I think that as it addresses that area to the south would be the, the biggest concern here, although there's also potential for development to the east that's not there yet. There's acreages, but right now this is in farmland. So in that case, you know, there would be a 25-foot setback here in that area if that was to develop.
Greg, do you have a question?
Eric, if it stayed PVP, what would the setback be then?
You would have to amend the plan that was done when we did the, the plan for the scout facility and incorporate all those standards into that plan. And that would establish the setbacks and the design requirements.
Okay.
So you would be creating that through the plan process. And that's, that would be the additional cost that they were, one of the things they were looking to not have to do, so.
Do you think that the 25-foot is, is equitable? As I'm looking at this, 25 feet would be about the width of about three, four of those trailers they've got parked there. The trailers and the space between them would-
Yeah, I mean, right now you're, see the tip of this parking lot?
Yeah.
That's really close to probably being 25. It's probably more like 30. So if you look at two stalls here, that's 20 feet. Give you sort of a sense?
But you've got the buffer area there as well, so.
Yeah, so.
Right there.
Right. So if, I'm not saying 25 is necessarily adequate. I think that the building code's going to take care of it. However, if there's a concern, I think you can put that condition on it. If you want it to be 60 feet, if you want it to be, you know, what, whatever feet you think is appropriate to protect that property.
I don't think 60 feet. You'd be taking all the property.
Eric, I'd be, I'm sorry.
All right, Greg.
I'd be interested in your opinion on why, from staff's perspective, why it couldn't be zero? What adverse effects do you see to the property to the south?
In this particular property, zero, I think, would be a little overbearing on the property to the south because it would be, involve a large retaining wall system in order to develop that land or some, a large amount of fill that would have to slope within this property somewhere. So all of a sudden, you're sort of putting everything up on a plateau. If you, if you filled it, it would put it up on a plateau that would be a little-
Overwhelming.
-overbearing maybe on that as this sits a little bit lower. I think I do have some, a photo that looks down that direction. This photo looks from the parking lot to the east. So you can see how that drops from the left down to this, this is, I think, their, their ring area. And then looking directly from their loading dock area to the scout facility, you can see that, that drop-off there. Now, it does come back up a little bit to their site. Not, I don't think that elevation is quite as high as where I'm standing in the photo. So there would, there'd be a fairly large wall system the closer you got to that drainage area, which is right along the property line.
Trent.
And leaving a 25-foot space in between would, the drop wouldn't be as, as forbidding as for, you wouldn't need to-
It wouldn't be as, probably as big of a wall for one.
It would still need a wall.
And it would also take it further away from the-
From the scout.
-from the other property, so.
Yeah. I'd like to know what the gentleman thinks of that.
We don't actually have final design, so I don't know what you've landed on.
Mm-hmm. I-
I just wanted to make sure you understood the potential for that.
Yeah.
Trent.
I'd like to know what the, the gentleman think of that.
Sir, could you restate your question?
Whether or not 25-foot would be an adequate setback for you so that the building wouldn't be quite as imposing when it was built.
With the scenarios we're looking at, the 25-feet, it really is not going to impact where the building's located. As Eric talked earlier, we need to go up the slope either with a grade change or retaining wall, then there's also the building code, which by fire code, building code says we need a 60-foot separation between buildings. And the city assumes that there's a building closest to the setback on the neighbor property, which is 25, so we would have to have at least 35 on our property to keep that 60-foot building separation, which is a building code issue and not a zoning issue. So 25 feet isn't going to, our building's going to be more than 25 feet away from the building, from the property line.
That wouldn't be a bad deal.
Greg?
I'll wait.
You wait? Excuse me. Anybody else? Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion? I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Do you have a motion?
I would move, I would move with the, provide that we add
A setback, an adequate setback. And I don't know if that is necessary or not, but the one letter that we got also wants to make sure that the noise and lights and all that sort of thing. But I think that is in the building code, if I'm not mistaken.
Maybe Greg can help you with that.
Well, I guess, based on the discussion, I'm less worried about the setback because I think the building code settles it. What my concern is, the M1 level of landscape in the buffer area versus what might the PB, PB. And so I guess, I would like to see that 25 or 30 feet back to the, however far back the Boy Scout building is, heavily landscaped. And I don't know what a number we should put on there, but maybe double the usual buffer amount, or staff can help out.
So if we're going with the C2 standard, you think it still should be above the C2?
Yeah, I think there's just such a big difference between the M and, and that, that if we would put a lot of landscape material in there, that would help, help soften that difference. And then if the building sits far enough away, then it's screened and hidden, and then we've protected the Boy Scouts. But she has a motion, so that's a...
What we add to the motion, I agree to, to the...
Sorry, tell us what, tell us what you want.
If you're going to do that, it would be good to establish an amount.
Joanne, turn on your mic, and then Greg.
I'm sorry. I'm, I'm thinking that, I, I agree with him, that we could put C2 standards in there.
Do you want to double it?
That's required. That's currently required by code, is C2 landscaping instead of M1.
I think we need to go beyond that. That's why I said double it.
Oh, double C2.
Double C2. It's still trees on 30-foot sound. It's basically, it's basically measured on units per 2, 2,500 square feet of open space. So, you know, it's one tree, one evergreen, and one shrub per 2, 2,500. So now, now it's two, that would be two evergreens, two shrubs, and two overstorey trees per 2,500 square feet.
And he's recommending four, four and four?
Well, it would be two, two and two.
He's recommending double.
No, no, it's one, one and one for C2.
In C2?
Yeah, it's, it would be that per, per 5,000 if it was M1.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the only difference would be, I don't really see the benefit of pushing it clear back to their back property line. I'd rather see it all condensed up in, that's why I said, from wherever the back of the Boy Scout building is, all to the west.
That good with you?
That's...
That's what you were looking for.
Yeah, I was wanting to consider what the neighbors were thinking, and do we have enough setback for it, which obviously we do. So if we could double or triple.
Based on the amount of open space, what, west of the east line of the facility, we'll figure out that number of feet before the acceptance.
You've got that, Ken.
So we, four times the amount of landscaping?
You want four times?
Two, two times, two times the C2.
The C2 requirement for open space.
Whatever it is that gets to what we were just talking about.
Are, are you good?
You want to post?
I'm good.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? CJ?
I, I would just like to make a comment. I would like to make a comment. I don't see any trees on the Boy Scout property. And to me, this is kind of a cardinal sin, that we're forcing a corporate client of the city to put all this landscaping in, and the Boy Scouts don't have trees. Can we help them out a little bit?
Yeah, I think they have trees. This is a point in time.
Yeah, I think you're looking at an older photograph here. We've had hundreds of trees on the property now, and are, and are dedicated to, to making that, that apart. Absolutely.
This is, you know, this is still considered a silt basin under construction, this area right here, at this point in time. Yeah. And then again, there's, they are young trees because it is a new site. There's, I know they plant in a lot of...
Which, which you're, which you're looking at is a construction site on...
Yeah, and it's hard to see because of the grades, but, you know, there's new, there's new evergreen plantings down in this area, along there.
So Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, if the commission wanted to make a recommendation for this additional condition on landscaping, the applicant would have to agree to that condition in writing prior to the council hearing. So there would be an opportunity for them to either review what that standard would be and, and either concur or not concur with that, that requirement prior to the council hearing, correct?
Correct. So, and we could come up with that actual amount.
Yes.
Since we don't have an exact measurement at this point in time to be able to put on paper.
Dan?
Ted, I'm sorry.
Joanne, potentially, because that, something is going to occur between now and the council meeting, maybe there could be some sort of a meeting between La Fredo and the Boy Scout building, group, Boy Scout group, gentleman that's here, and have some sort of administrative approval on what the landscape could be. Maybe not set it here, but allow them to negotiate maybe what it might be. And that could go to council.
Greg.
I really like where you're going. I just sort of as a point of information or thought, I find it very arbitrary to say 25-foot setback or four times the landscaping standards. I, I understand your intent. I mean, for myself, I would almost rather we deny the request, keep it BPB, if I said that right.
Cool.
And so that when an actual design comes forward, that the design team can work out a solution that both property owners have to agree on, because they're using the same zone, you know, the same property to the south. I mean, I'd almost rather just let that play itself out when there's actually a design, instead of just being so arbitrary. And you're kind of saying that, that the two get together and work out a solution that is a little more grounded.
I'll defend myself. It's not any more arbitrary than the current zoning ordinance. That's just a bunch of numbers. I'm double arbitrary.
Well, that's why I like form-based.
Anything else? Greg, anything? Okay. Any other discussion? We've got, we've got her motion.
I've got a thought to what you're saying here. Can we, were that so that there would be discussion between the two in regards to landscaping?
I think, I think what could happen is, in between now and the council meeting, we could calculate what the landscaping is, how many trees and shrubs would be required based on what's recommended. Schedule a meeting with both the applicant and the Boy Scouts, have them come in, and then, that would be prior to the council meeting, and then the Boy Scouts could be at the council meeting and indicate whether that's an acceptable amount of landscaping to them, and the applicant could indicate whether it's an acceptable amount of landscaping for them, and move forward.
Sounds good.
That sounds good. All right, yeah.
Well, they could change, they could, they could change your motion anyway. Counsel could.
Yeah.
So if you put that on there, then we can, they can always change it.
Yeah.
Or we could recommend what we'd like them to do, which is negotiate.
So if you, if you're okay with changing it, change it. Change your motion.
With, with changing, giving them guidelines that the two would work together on.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. The motion is moving staff with negotiation between the parties, as I understand it right now.
What, what I might suggest is, Greg, Greg made the motion, or made a suggestion for an amount. If you're willing to accept that as a friendly amendment, that'd be a starting point for the meeting to have. And then, again, that parties could say whether or not they agree to that condition that's proposed. And if they want to propose additional landscaping or a higher condition, they can, they can state that. If they think it's too much, they can both stand at the meeting. You said double the C2, from the east side of the building forward to the west.
On advice of council, we're going to go ahead and split it, part A and part B. So the first one is A, and I'm, I'm assuming, I don't remember who moved it.
Joanne.
Joanne, okay, I'm sorry, Joanne, thank you. So we're going to go ahead and move part A, which is determine whether or not the proposed is in conformance. Staff's recommendation is, it is, right?
Yes.
Staff's recommendation is that it is, and that would be staff's recommendation. Any, any discussion on that? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Acclamation. Got it? Yeah, well, confusing is mud, right? Okay. Then we're going to go ahead and move B, which is rezoning from PBP to M1, and they're to get together and discuss the, the landscaping. Is that right? Did everybody understand that? All right. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Acclamation. I don't, no opposition? I didn't see any opposition. Make, make sure I don't do that again. Okay. No opposition. It passes as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item, item number six. No, strike that. We're going to move on, on to item number seven. We're moving six on to the back. Item number seven, from the Lee Family Properties, represented by Andy Lee, for review and approval of a site plan under Design Guidelines in NPC Districts on property located at 3701 Ingersoll Avenue, to allow revision to off-street parking configuration and landscaping. Eric, you presenting on this one?
Mr. Chair.
Thanks, sir.
The, the property we're dealing with here is the, at 37th Street in Ingersoll. It incorporates the Ingersoll, the former Ingersoll Dinner Theater, and then a commercial center, which includes the Greenwood Lounge, Manhattan Deli, and a business that has been named, I believe, Lot 33. So it's all one parcel, one site, under common ownership, in order to renew liquor licenses based on uses within the center. The owner has to demonstrate meeting the parking requirement, which is basically established through the NPC zoning district as a design guideline, at 60% of the typical standard that would be applied in other commercial districts. And so it also then requires them to demonstrate how that parking is configured. So we have a site plan that was submitted and should have been included in your packet. It is proposing to modify streetscape along 37th Street, and then also shows the striping. One of the things I should point out is, it assumes that there's buffer incorporated on adjoining property to the north, which the property owner and developer also owns, which is something that I'll mention, how staff is viewing that. But I did want to show that the original proposal proposed a setback, which was reduced from the, a standard that we normally apply of 10 feet when we have an, our district property to the north. And they're suggesting to achieve that using subject property and property to the north. So staff evaluated this under the NPC Design Guidelines. One thing I should point out is that when we do apply landscaping to NPC, there's, the verbiage in the Design Guidelines is, is a little more general and subjective. But what we try to do as a benchmark is use the C2 minimums for, you know, plant materials, landscape perimeters, that type of thing. So in this area, typically, we would look at a five- or seven-foot landscape perimeter along any street frontage from parking. We would look at the 10-foot buffer yard with fence and planting strip along any residential property. And then, depending, in this case, we have a more of a pedestrian-oriented streetscape element. So we, because this is in the Ingersoll streetscape area of the, that concept, we want to ensure that that concept is applied as part of any site plan along that corridor. And we want to treat this site as we would any other site along the corridor. And so we've also recommended that that be incorporated. Right now, they're just proposing to define or stripe the existing angled spaces that back directly off of Ingersoll. And the, the streetscape along Ingersoll would look to convert that to a, more of a, a parallel situation, maybe inset it a little bit. We've actually, the staff planner that reviewed this, came up with a sketch as to how that would appear. So you can sort of see underneath the proposal of the angled parking, which right now is one, two, three, four, five, six, I'm sorry, five spaces. Potentially, you could get six. I'm not sure. I think it's also counting some off to the side here. But basically, you could recover all the angled spaces in a parallel fashion along there.
They would lose one. They would lose one in that concept.
One of the things that you can't do, because of this proximity, this area is wide enough for a space, but you can't put a car there because of the vision clearance coming off the street intersection. So this area is basically off limits to parking. But this would incorporate the type of planter beds we would look for in the pedestrian furniture that we would see anywhere proposed along the corridor. So getting to the staff recommendation, then, we are recommending approval of this. We do want to make sure that all the administrative requirements of any site plan are achieved through the Permit and Development Center. We want to ensure that they provide the 10-foot buffer at the north end of the property. We don't believe this is going to impact their ability to meet maneuvering widths back in this area, so, but it would involve removing some of the paved area that's back there to, to achieve that. We would want the plant material to be in accordance with buffer yard requirements for C2 districts. We want to ensure that there's a provision of a five-foot minimum along Ingersoll, right here in this area. You'll see, they're just showing a taper, and then there's this pole sign that's in the way. So getting back to that sketch, we want to ensure that there's a five-foot strip here. Again, that doesn't prevent them from achieving the necessary maneuvering for these angled spaces that would head in off of this driveway. They would, they would have to narrow this driveway down a bit. Then we'd also want them to incorporate those streetscape design elements from the Ingersoll streetscape concept, to include Class A sidewalk, two-by-two squares within the traveled pedestrian portion, integrated street curb, planter beds, raised curb, street trees, shrub, flower plantings, planter urns, street furniture, brick pavers, and KIM architectural type street light, which, if you're familiar with the Ingersoll streetscape, that's a, a black archetype. It also includes a pedestrian element that faces back at the, at the sidewalk. And then the, the planter bed railings associated with the planter beds shown on this sketch. And then removal of this pole sign here. And they would have the opportunity to put a monument-type sign in there with a sign permit.
I understand, Eric. Mike has a few additions to your...
Sure.
Just, just to be clear, the reason this site plan is in front of the planning commission tonight is because of a zoning enforcement action on the property. There's been a lot of discussion about the liquor licenses for these, these businesses along here. It's my understanding that the Greenwood Lounge is the only business that's technically considered having any grandfathered rights on the property. And so in order for the dinner theater, which is on the left of this drawing, and Lot 33, those are both classified as restaurants under our current code. To get a new liquor license for their restaurant, they have to have a site plan in conformance with our landscape standards. So they're no longer grandfathered for an unimproved parking lot. So they're trying to submit a site plan to meet, bring the, the parking onsite up to current standards. So assuming that, again, they are just seeking restaurant uses on the property, they could just then go to council... they could just then go to council for renewal of a liquor license subject to compliance with this site plan. If they wanted to seek a bar or a tavern use, they would have to go back to the Board of Adjustment first for a conditional use permit before they could go to the council for their liquor license. The third thing is, there's not enough parking on this site for all of the uses that are on the property. Mr. Lee has acquired the Edco Credit Union property, which abuts this, which has an existing approved site plan. So as part of any liquor license issuance by the council or conditional use permit review by the Board of Adjustment, they will be required to provide a shared parking agreement for use of additional parking on the Edco Credit Union property. So when I talked with Sue Donovan, our zoning enforcement officer, this morning about whether or not there was a need for a condition to state all of these improvements have to be put in before, say, a liquor license is issued, she indicated it was her intent that if we get an approved site plan, that she would seek a... Basically, a consent decree in district court to require these improvements to be put in by a date certain as a condition of taking anything to council for a liquor license. We're running into the end of the fall for plantings, so the reality is it would likely be, you know, May or June next year before the new plantings would ultimately go in due to construction. So I think that probably... The consent decree probably addresses the issue that anyone may have about, well, how do we ensure these improvements are in before they go to council? But that was the approach that she had recommended on this instance.
Greg.
That's better than us putting the restriction on?
I think you can do both, but it's our intent to pursue the consent decree with the courts. And quite honestly, I think that probably has a little bit more immediate effect on this, because if you just put it on a site plan and then they don't comply with it, then we have to start a new enforcement action going through the court system. We keep it in this existing framework and make it part of a consent decree, then they don't comply, we go straight to district court and ask for enforcement of that consent decree.
But couldn't we not issue the liquor license until the improvements are done?
Council clearly could do that when they consider the liquor license also.
I mean, I don't care. I just... Based on history, I think whatever we can... Whatever the convincing tool is, we probably need to use it.
Yes, my point was just that we're aware of the concern that we want the improvements in. A lot of people want the improvements in before, you know, liquor license or shortly after any liquor license is issued. I think that's still up to the council to impose if they want. But from a staff perspective, we are proposing it as part of a consent decree. Thank you.
Counsel, do you have anything to add?
Mr. Chair, members of the committee, there is pending enforcement action. If the parties were in agreement that this site plan resolves the dispute that's the subject of that case, having that as part of the court order certainly makes it easier to enforce. What is in front of you is the site plan, which is really parking and landscaping at this point. If you would, by separate action, choose to make a recommendation to the city council on how they act on a potential future liquor license application, you could do that, but that is really a separate item than the site plan that is in front of you.
Okay. Any?
Yeah. So perhaps that answers the question as to why one of the recommendations, number one, is compliance with all administrative review requirements. My question was, is this a separate compliance issue than what we're talking about?
Yeah. Item one is really dealing with the administrative comments they've already received on their site plan as far as things that don't comply with code that need to be amended on their site plan.
Like making sure a radius is labeled correctly or, you know, something more... Something we don't want to spend a lot of time discussing in a hearing.
But somebody's gonna make sure that...
Yes, we want to make sure it meets all of our normal requirements for any site plan.
Any other questions? Is the applicant present?
Yes, I believe I saw him here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Greg, you got something?
Eric had one question. I know as properties are being developed along Ingersoll, as we get sort of further out of where we started, the standards, that some of those properties are not having to do the full compliance with all the metal fencing and different things as you get further out. So I'm kind of curious. This is, I think, fairly far west. I was trying to understand that. What's staff's thoughts on that?
There's... Yeah. And there's a couple of different zonings we're dealing with along there. So... And I'll let Mike probably address that, too, because...
The... This area was designated for 100% of compliance on the streetscape. We have some areas along the corridor that are not zoned NPC district, so we haven't been able to require maybe the full 100% streetscape design. But clearly, on this site, we have that authority under the zoning, and that is why we've recommended it.
Thanks. We could have the applicant come forward, give us your name and address. You're gonna need to sign in, too, sir, but go ahead.
Tom Orman, 939 65th Street, Windsor Heights. I prepared the documents. I'm with Keiker Johnson Architecture. And this last drawing showing the angled parking taken out and old planners in there, that's the first time anyone's seen that. I have staff recommendation dated 10/11/13, and we've met with staff a couple of times. The owner has made attempts to find out what they need to do to move this ahead, and every time, it seems like the city's moving the goalposts. This started out that there wasn't enough parking. They had an agreement with a landowner across Ingersoll for a while. Then that lapsed, and then they were not in compliance. Now they have an agreement with Edco for the parking, for the balance of the parking that they need. And then we needed to... Well, staff is out there. They found out that the trash enclosure wasn't in compliance, so the owner was gonna move that. And then the 5-foot buffer along 37th Street, that was added. And we did ask staff to give us the requirements that they were gonna need for the Ingersoll corridor, the landscaping, and they told me that they didn't have those, that they hadn't been worked out yet. And I even left a little corner of the site stating that. But everything else was okay. I've got staff requirements here. And as these requirements, as I said, at 10/11/13, the only issue the owner has with their requirements is the 10-foot buffer strip up at the top of the plan. The owner would like to establish an easement counting some of his property to the north, which he owns, because he feels that staff's idea of moving that... The top of the parking lot down 6 feet to get the 10-foot buffer within this site would restrict the parking so much, and he's worried about the liability issues. It would be 24 feet, but you can see where that crosshatched area is, kind of at the back of the Ingersoll Theater, that this is not a normal parking lot. It is an existing situation that we're trying to get into compliance. So the owner feels more comfortable having the greater clearance at the center. Can I? You got a pointer somewhere? This is it here. Okay. This area here is about 30 feet. This area right here, the existing setback or buffer zone is only 4 foot. This cross... This gridded area up here is the 6-foot additional, which would count for the 10-foot buffer strip. If we move all that down, the owner's just concerned that the area between here and here will be really restrictive. There would be ways to probably alter the parking, but everything we're doing here is giving less and less parking onsite. And in most instances, the parking is sufficient, except certain times of the week. But this area here, nothing was ever mentioned. Now landscaping in this area, remember, this is the Ingersoll Theater. I don't have a picture of it, but there's a huge existing marquee that comes out almost to the street. And there is a circulation ideas because of the capacity of this building. So the owner would not like to see any plantings right here, and that was mentioned to staff. And staff said, oh, yeah, we can't really do that. I'm just kind of surprised. That's the first time I saw that one sketch that shows all the...
Well, Tom, let me ask you something. Are what you asking for is additional time? Do you want us to continue this so that you have a chance to talk to staff? Is that what you're asking for?
Well, if we're gonna vote on whether or not, that all gets turned into street parking and everything else, just on the owner's behalf, I would have to ask for more time, because that's a... Like I said, that's the first time the owner's seen that or even heard of it. And we've had contact with staff. I talked to staff yesterday on the phone in preparation for this.
Well, that's fine, Tom. I just need to make sure that you're asking for a continuance. So that's what you're asking?
I guess that's what we need, so we can work that out.
Is there a motion?
I move.
Move to continue to... How much time you need, Eric? Next meeting?
The next time is a very light agenda, so if they can do it within the next... Before November 7th.
November 7th? Okay.
I would hope so. I mean...
Okay. We're moving to November 7th. Any discussion?
I think there's some folks here to speak on the item. And then I'd ask one question relative to the so-called buffer strip. Would it... If we were to grant that on the adjoining property that's zoned differently than this property, would we have to rezone that?
No.
The footage? The 6 feet?
No. It would just be an easement dedication on the property.
Any other... Is there anyone here to speak on this item, either in favor or opposed to this item? We're looking at the item number 7. Okay. Can you guys wait until November 7th, or do you want to speak tonight?
I think we request some conversation perhaps with the captain. In the meantime, we're representing the North Grand Neighborhood.
Okay. And I understand that. But if you want to speak tonight, I'm certainly gonna permit you to do so, but understand the meeting's gonna be on the 7th if we continue this. It's your call. Ted Johnson.
Could we add to the motion to continue that they have a meeting with the North Grand Neighborhood?
Okay. We could do that. Is there any opposition to that?
Do you understand?
I'm sorry.
We're gonna require you to have a meeting with the neighborhood?
The owner.
The owner or you? No matter.
Well, the owner's here. Could he speak to that? I just... I'll talk about the portions of the work I did, but I think the owner could speak to that himself. Well, this is the owner of the property, Mr. Lee.
Yes.
You could bring that last point up with him. They want to know if... They want you to have a meeting with some of the Neighborhood Association. Well, I think there's other issues there. Could you repeat that?
Yes. And a lady and a gentleman, I remember.
Mr. Lee, our question is, are you willing to meet with the Neighborhood Association before November 7th?
I... Well, it's really, you see, I didn't meet the neighborhood. You see that? You see the neighborhood? You see the question meeting, the neighborhood?
Would you be willing to meet with the neighborhood before the next Plan and Zoning Commission meeting on November 7th?
Yes.
You will?
Yes.
Yes, you will meet with the neighborhood? Okay. Yes. As a... I'd like that as a condition of the...
All right. Yeah. Name and address.
He's the applicant.
All right. Any discussion? Okay. Seeing none? That's right. Are you still wanting to speak?
4101 River Oaks Drive. It's been a long time.
We just need to ask a question of you, Mr. Lee. That's all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
If the Neighborhood Representatives speak this time, will they be able to speak again at the next meeting?
They're welcome to speak later on, too. I don't have any problem with that. I just... And here's the thing, so everybody understands. The reason why you lose your impact if speaking tonight is because the meeting's gonna be the 7th. So I just do that so everybody understands. Pete, go ahead.
My fellow Neighborhood people are saying... Go ahead. Kimberly Hansen, President, North Grand Neighborhood Association, 4015 Woodland Avenue. Eric, I put a copy there on your table. The Neighborhood Association did meet, and we have a communication that we wanted to read. The Board of Directors of the North Grand Neighborhood Association have reviewed the site plan as well as the city staff recommendations for the properties located at 3701 through 3711 Ingersoll Avenue. Pursuant to our review and discussion, we offer the following comments. We agree in support with the streetscaping as proposed by city staff, adherence to the NPC guidelines, encourage that the project be contingent on a timeline, deadline, and performance bonding, and to withhold the liquor license until these are satisfied, the removal of the pole sign bases on the southeast and southwest corners of the site.
And you understand that's all the recommendations that staff already has, right?
No, I think the pole isn't on there.
Well, they suggested removing the pole. That was one of the things that Eric talked about.
What we don't agree with or don't support is the proposed 6-foot easement into the residential property to the north in lieu of a 10-foot parking setback, any removal of trees on the adjacent property to the north, 4 onsite parking spaces on the west side of 37th Street. There is currently no parking on that side of the side street, so you would be allowing a new condition. Any reduction in minimum parking requirements. Numerous infractions and unfulfilled agreements have been associated with these properties over the last months and years. In this case, the neighborhood believes past behavior is a reasonable indicator of future behavior. We have little confidence that the site plan requirements will be completed in a timely and satisfactory manner, if at all. Therefore, it is our position of our board that the proposed site plan meet or exceed all minimum requirements as well as requirements recommended by the city staff. Thank you.
Any questions before you move? Any questions? Ted.
Kim, has the applicant sought to meet with the North Grand Neighborhood?
No. No, we have not had that opportunity. So we would love to be able to meet with him.
Thanks. Hey, Kimberly. Is there anyone else here to speak? Okay. Seeing none. We're gonna go ahead and take a vote on the continuance. Everybody understand? All those in favor of the continuance until November 7th, please indicate by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Acclamation. I believe. All right. Thank you. Now we're gonna move on to number 8. Eric, you're presenting on this one, sir?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. You guys want to discuss things, you can do so out in the hall. Thank you.
You should have a copy of the submittal in your packet. So I'm gonna let the designer go over the finer... go over the finer points of their site plan, but I do want to cover this quickly for you. We're dealing with the former, the Randolph Hotel site, but it includes additional buildings to the north and to the west, as well with this proposed reuse, redevelopment for apartment units. And what's driving this is the multifamily design guidelines causing the site plan to come in front of the Plan and Zoning Commission. This is the property, and so it does include the building to the west, and then maybe I can get a little better view here, and this building as well, but my understanding is only the west half, or the south half of this building includes the existing commercial Staff reviewed this in terms of the multifamily design guidelines. One of the things that was in question at the time it was submitted was wanting to ensure compliance with the Court Avenue streetscape requirements. So what was submitted, I don't believe, included that scheme. So we, one of the conditions was we wanted to ensure that that would be incorporated into their design.
Eric, if I could, on the fourth street side, there are those two trees there, and there was a question about the replacement of those. It's my understanding today that...
They're ash trees, yeah.
Yeah, the city arborists directed them to remove those ash trees, basically preventive of the ash borer, and replant a different species on the property, which resolved kind of the question about the streetscaping on that side of the property.
I'm not sure that everybody's in agreement with that, because if they are healthy trees, those trees can be treated until other trees can come along and take their place. So do we know the condition of those trees before we just go ahead and remove them?
I don't. I relied on the city arborist's opinion on that. I know the issue is, we're trying to maintain a six-foot walkway along the side of the building between that and the planter pit, and so it's been a question about how to design to ensure that ADA compliance along there. And I think the arborist's opinion was that, given all of those constraints and the fact that eventually the ash borer will be gone, it would be better to get the, better to get the streetscaping compliance with ADA standards and get the new plantings put in and get those growing. So that was new today that information came in, so I'm relying on the arborist's opinion on that.
The other thing is to make sure that when we do put the new tree pits in, that they're the 50-square foot, which is a five-by-10 planter. Then the off-street parking along the west side of the building shall be screened along Court Avenue, so we want something in this area to obscure that parking. And that also is considered an urban edge element when you look at the downtown design guidelines as well. So we're asking for an urban edge that included four-foot-tall architectural fence and ornamental grasses. Then the, we want to ensure that they're showing any future patio, outdoor seating areas along either of the street right-ofways, along the south and the east. And then we are also indicating that additional screening material might be necessary to ensure that the refuse collection containers and generators and transformer in the west side of the property are properly screened 100 percent. There's some question about the way that the, they were shown to make sure that they were 100 percent opaque, but we also understand there's, there needs to be the ability for those to allow air pass-through. So we're indicating also that a solid metal material might be needed along the trellis And I'll let the designer for the applicant speak to that, how they want to address that, but my understanding is that they're in line with these recommendations that staff is making at this point in time. Nobody, yeah, nobody came to look at the site plan, so we didn't provide any cards for comment.
Okay. Any questions, Eric?
I have a question. It says minor site plan. I've not seen a differentiation between major and minor.
If you look at our ordinance, a minor site plan is a lesser area, less than a impacted area of less than 10,000 square feet, so that kicks in as minor site plan. It generally doesn't involve incorporating stormwater management things, extension of utilities, or anything of that, that's more major in nature.
Does the applicant here, please step forward for me, your name and address. I'm getting to sign in, but go ahead and give your name and address.
Good evening. Jackie Niklaus with Sherman Associates, 233 Park Avenue, South Minneapolis. And I also have my design team here tonight, if you would like a quick presentation on the site plan. May as well, Emily and Seth, if you just want to do a brief, I know you prepared a brief presentation, could clarify a few of Eric's points.
Good evening. I'm Emily Donovan with Substance Architecture. My address is 680 44th Street. If I could just clarify...
Do you want one of the photos, or did you want...
Yeah, one of the photos. The building to the north of the Randolph Hotel, we are redoing the entire building. It's the Royal Mile building that we are, that is not in our project. But just real quickly, a brief overall of the architecture of this project. The Randolph is an eight-story concrete historic hotel, and then the building to the west of it is called the Earl and La Basque. I always get that wrong. It's a four-story wood structure, and this building to the, to the north is a three-story wood structure. We're combining all three of those buildings so that we can, all three buildings will kind of work together, providing egress for all three buildings. We'll be adding a new stairway in the back that accesses, accesses the, all three buildings, a new stairway in the Randolph Hotel. They'll be renovating all buildings extensively from the roof down, you know, bringing up electrical, mechanical, fire, safety, everything finishes. Right now, there's 101 units, I believe, very tiny spaces, you know, some are probably seven-by-10-foot rooms, and so we're expanding those into apartment rate, or market rate apartments, and we will end up with 55 units. So, you know, good, good quality. The first floor will be all commercial space, and the owner is hoping to get restaurants, new restaurants into those spaces.
Seth Gray, landscape architect with Confluence, 1300 Walnut Street, Des Moines. We are assisting Substance and Sherman Associates with the site design for the Randolph. This is a little bit more of an updated plan than what you guys have seen. Right now, we're agreeing to all staff concerns, and we're replacing all of the walks, pavers, curbs as part of this project. The arborist has asked us to remove the tree pits along Court Avenue, which are right here, and widen the tree pits to increase the planting volume for the roots, and that's what we're showing here. There is a missing tree on Fourth Street right now. There's an empty tree pit, but the grate is still there. As Eric said earlier, we are going to be removing that grate and widening that pit to a four-foot by 12-and-a-half-foot tree pit for that tree. We are providing a provision for five stalls on the west side with one universal ADA stall, and all of the mechanical equipment, the transformer and the dumpsters are located on the west side. Right now, we're revisiting the screening material. I'm looking at more of an opaque screen to block the view of that equipment. And we are also providing a small pedestrian plaza on the north side for the building tenants.
Any questions? Any questions? Greg?
Are you going after historic tax credits on this project?
Historic tax credits? Yeah. Yes, we are.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions? Guys, if anything else? Thank you. I'm going to go open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? In favor of the application? Seeing none. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? Please come forward, give us your name and address. You're going to need to sign in.
Hi, my name is Steve Stroud, 118 Water Street, here in downtown Des Moines. I'm here in opposition to this project, to this plan, based on concerns about the developer. I live in a Sherman project, the condominiums, the Water Street brownstone's just a few blocks from here, and we've had, since the project was built, significant water leakage issues in our basement.
Steve, not to interrupt you, but let me explain something to you. We're talking about this project, that's what we want to talk about, okay?
I know. I understand the forum. I understand the venue. If you just give me a minute. We've had significant leak problems. We've had frustrations in getting those repaired by the developer. We've recently had a comprehensive engineering study showing that we have significant design and workmanship issues.
But Steve, once again...
I know. Just one more minute, and then I'll go away.
All right, if you get to your point with respect to this project, that'd be fine.
As you all execute the comprehensive plan for Des Moines, I understand you're involved with the nuances of site and plan. As a citizen and as a downtown resident, I have concerns about the execution of that plan. I think the plan is only as good as the inherent promises in that plan and the execution of that plan. Based on personal experience, we have significant issues in a project done by the same developer. I would hate to see this project saddled with those same design and workmanship issues. I would hate to see this project saddled with the liability that comes out of those problems by using the same developer. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? Anyone else to speak in opposition to the application? Seeing none? Can you rebuttal time? Okay. We're going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I have staff.
Christine's moving staff. Any discussion?
I just wanted to let this group know that my great-great-grandfather built the Youngerman Block, which is the north building in your development, so I have a particular interest in your undertaking. I'll watch carefully for the execution, shall we say. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Can I add something to that film?
If you'd like to, you can just stay right there. You don't really need to...
All right, just as to add on to that, actually, the exterior of that building is a very unique material.
Avisine.
Avisine, which was an invention of your great-grandfather. So obviously, it's very historical, and you have to treat it extremely gently. So as you watch that, know, as you go by that building, know that it's like, it's very unique. There's five in the Midwest that use that exterior material.
What is avisine?
It's not asbestos. It's a fake stone product, is the best way to describe it, a very early fall.
Thin brick.
Way better.
In 1876, it was cultured stone.
Okay, now that we've learned all about cultured stone, we're going to go ahead and take a vote. All those... CJ, do you have something?
I have a question. How old is this building? Eighteen, I mean, is it subject to the historical...
They would have to follow Secretary of Interior Standards with the tax credits, so...
Okay, so that's taken care. Okay, thanks.
All those in favor of staff, it's a recommendation, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Everybody? Ted, will you? Okay, acclamation. Okay, now we're going to, we're going to go ahead and take up item number six, which is a request from Beaverdale Partners LLC, represented by Jeff Ewing, for review and approval of an amendment to the Rice Development Partners PUD conceptual plan on property located at 3001 Beaver Avenue, revising the name to Beaverdale Cooperative Housing PUD and allowing development of a three-story, 54-unit, multiple-family dwelling for senior living. Eric, you presenting on this one, too?
Yes, and I'm, Mike will probably be interjecting at certain points as well, so he has familiarity with more of the history of the overall PUD, so he will be adding to my presentation. These are the cards. I did get one. One was handed to our secretary at the beginning of the meeting. It's not posted on the consent map, so you'll note that it doesn't have a color marking on it. That'll be the one. But we will update the map before it goes to council. The property we are dealing with here is the former Rice School site, most recently used as an open space with developed parking owned by the schools after they removed the school from the site. And then it was, title was transferred to the current developer that's proposing this. And I will hand around the deed that the property was transferred on, I'll give you a date here, December 15th, 2010. And I'll also hand you a copy of the property tax record. Quickly, some pictures of the site, looking from the northwest corner of the site to the southeast, along Beaver in the foreground. And then looking from the south part of the site at the west edge, up Beaver is on your left, so we're looking to the north along Adams in the foreground. This is shifting further to the east along Adams, looking to the northeast. This is a perspective, if I can get it to focus, there we go. This is the pedestrian connection from the neighborhood to the north that was, has been used historically by the kids that would go to school through this, and has been used by the neighborhood to access the green space. This is looking to the west, southwest. Adams would be to your left from the parking area. This is the existing trees on the south edge of the site, so Holy Trinity Church and School are just to the, in the far background. And then this is looking north from the parking lot, if I can get it to focus. My stack's probably getting too thick here, so... Even the projector and camera are getting a little tired.
Can we turn off the autofocus and use...
Yeah, it's on. You want to turn it off, you mean?
Yes.
And just manually?
It'd be easier than it will. Maybe. See how well that worked?
Very interesting perspective.
I'm sorry.
There we go. Sorry. So that's the site. Right now, the property is zoned, PUD, based on the zoning approval back in 2007 with a conceptual plan that allowed up to 55 units in addition to 15,000 square feet, 15,810 square feet of mixed commercial space, which would allow commercial and office. That plan did require a development plan that came back in front of the plan and zoning and city council, which was submitted. And then was given the condition that no construction on that development plan could be executed until an agreement was made with the city for the sewer infrastructure within Wallace, which never transpired. So the developer in this instance is back in front of the commission tonight, amending the proposal of the current approved conceptual plan to allow a 54-unit senior living cooperative project, which, and I'll allow them to answer the finer points of how the cooperative is going to be established and how that works, if there's any questions on that. But you can see there's drive entrances proposed from the north and the very far east edge of the site, off of Adams and Beaver, staying as far away from the intersection as possible. Conceptually, they're showing extensive landscaping along the east and north edges. Parking is to the east. That elevation-wise, that sits quite a bit below the elevator, you know, the elevation along Beaver. The other thing you should note is that the building is set back 30 feet here at the closest point from Beaver Avenue right-of-way. And then they're also proposing a significant row of landscaping along Beaver on the private property side. One point I should make is that we are also wanting to see elements of the Beaver Avenue streetscape extended up into this area and would include plantings that would be in the right-of-way as well. If you go to the staff recommendation, there's a number of items that we're asking for as revisions to this. And I'll just quickly go down them so you understand them. We want to make sure that the installation of any infrastructure, basically public utilities and sewers that serve the property, meet all of our minimum design standards, and they be installed at the developer's expense. The PUD conceptual plan needs to contain additional detail regarding the stormwater main that would connect to the existing sewer in 40th Place. Right-of-way, including its size, 15-inch diameter, that will be constructed to city standards. We want to make sure there's a 30-foot-wide easement for sanitary sewer that crosses the southwest corner of the site. To include a note that no structures or signs shall be placed in that easement. We want to include additional information, cross-sectional drawings that identify the depth and slope of the proposed basin and capacity calculations for the basin. So more detail than we generally require on a PUD conceptual plan, just so you understand that. Then we want to include a six-foot-tall solid wood fence along the north and east property lines. That portion, which is within the 30-foot front setbacks along the public streets, would be dropped to three feet. I've heard some comments from the applicant that, in meeting with neighbors, that there might be some desire not to have a screen fence. From the staff's perspective, if the commission determines that it's in the better interest of the neighbors to do something different than a screen fence, then I think staff's going to go with the commission's recommendation on that. We want to demonstrate whether pedestrian access to Wallace Lane is provided. If it is provided, then we need to demonstrate that it'll be done properly, basically, and connect to the proposed sidewalk and carry pedestrians within the development. So that was unclear in the review of the site plan, of the concept plan, conceptual plan. We want to demonstrate the existing fencing along the pedestrian access. Be replaced with black vinyl-coated chain-link fencing, again, if that is maintained as a pedestrian connection. We want to clean up that fencing along that with black vinyl-coated fencing. The PUD conceptual plan shall demonstrate that a buffer yard plantings, two over-storyed trees and six evergreens per 100 lineal feet be provided within a 20-foot-wide buffer on both the north and east property lines of this entire boundary that adjoins the residential properties. That might require that the... Well, this will require that the north driveway be shifted to meet that 20-foot, which would also cause the building to be shifted in some manner. Clarify whether the PUD conceptual plan, clarify whether any existing trees are proposed to be removed on-site. It's not clear if any would be removed. And any approved removals shall be subject to the city's mitigation ordinance, so we want comments to that effect. The actual removal and mitigation would be in the development plan, but we want them to indicate whether there's any thought that these would be removed and that they will conform to the mitigation requirements. We want the conceptual plan to reflect an overall unified landscaping design with some foundation plantings, plantings surrounding off-street parking area, as well as street tree plantings, which are not shown at this point in time, which would be the portion I talked about in the extension of the Beaver streetscape concept, that that would include a street tree every 30 lineal feet along Beaver Avenue and Adams Street fringe. I'm sorry, Adams Avenue fringe. Putting a note on the conceptual plan regarding that the Beaverdale, Beaver Avenue streetscape shall be revised to a state that any future PUD development plan shall include design elements of the Beaver Avenue streetscape along the Beaver Avenue frontage, including, but not limited to, a six-foot-wide sidewalk, a six-foot-wide planting strip between curb and sidewalk, black streetlight poles to replace the existing wood poles, black LED streetlight fixtures and appropriate tree species in accordance with that plan. A note shall be added to state that the minimum five-foot sidewalk, five-foot-wide planting strip will be provided along the Adams Avenue fringe from Beaver Avenue to the west edge of the proposed driveway access along Adams. So that would allow then to narrow down then to the existing four-foot walk that would run east of that, I believe. The developer shall provide a street lighting design for the Beaver Avenue fringe that complies with the city's street lighting standards. A note shall be added to state that existing wood poles along Beaver replaced with the black poles, and I've already indicated that in accordance with the standards that are in the Beaverdale street design. Also, overhead service crossings over Beaver will be undergrounded at the developer's expense, and there's, I believe there's a couple that we've identified as potential that are serviced, not just through transmission lines. A public access easement provided for sidewalks along Beaver Avenue and Adams that extend onto the subject property, so if, to get that six, if that requires anything on this private side of the property, we need to show that there would be an easement obtained as part of the development plan. Building elevations shall be revised in accordance with the following. Predominant entrance feature oriented toward Beaver Avenue shall be provided on the west facade. Right now, it's sort of backing on... So... So this elevation would, right here, would require a prominent entrance feature. All building materials shall be... I'm sorry, the PUD conceptual plan shall demonstrate a sidewalk that connects this entrance to the public sidewalk, so getting back to that, the plan, that prominence entrance feature along here should have a direct connection to get to the public sidewalk. All building materials clearly labeled on the PUD conceptual plan. Two-thirds of the surface area of the building facades along Beaver Avenue or Adams Avenue, as well as two other short-end facades... I'm sorry. Right here. Shall be sited with brick or stone. At least one-third of the building facades facing the internal parking lot shall be sited with brick or stone, so that's these inside facades here shown. A note shall be added to state any horizontal overlap siding and trim shall consist of the cement board material. Gables on the structure shall include exposed rafters, decorative beams or braces, and/or shake-style cement board siding. All windows of the structure shall be double-hung or multi-light over single-pane craftsman style. A note shall be added to state all exterior entry doors on the structure shall have multi-light craftsman-style windows. A note shall be added to state all windows and exterior entry doors on the structure shall have trim surrounds on at least four, of at least four inches in width. A note shall be added to state that the roof will have architectural-type asphalt shingles with a minimum 30-year warranty. A note shall be added that states that any decks that are not fully recessed into the structure shall be constructed with steel frames and steel support posts. A note shall be added to state that any HVAC equipment shall vent through the roof and rooftop vents shall be complementary in color to the roof material. Any rooftop mechanical equipment shall be mounted on the private parking lot side of the building and architecturally screened from view. A note shall be added to state all utility meters, transformers, ground-mounted equipment and other utilities shall be placed on building facades that face the private parking lot. A note on the PUD conceptual plan regarding monument signs must be clarified to state that any freestanding signage will be of a monument style with bases constructed of brick or stone materials that match the masonry materials used on the primary structure. The PUD conceptual plan shall demonstrate the location of any outdoor reuse, collection, container enclosure, and provide a statement that any such structure will be constructed with brick or stone materials that match the masonry materials used on the primary facade, primary structure and steel gates. Any enclosure structure should also include a non-gated pedestrian entrance and shall be sized to accommodate recycling containers. If no outdoor enclosures are proposed, then a note should be added to state that all refuse collection containers must be located within the building. Are there any specific comments or questions of staff? Yes.
You may have already said this, and if you did, I apologize. When was the original concept approved?
In 2008, I believe. I'm sorry. March 26, 2007.
Could staff address any sunshine provisions, or if there's sunset provisions, I think it's called, and I certainly don't know the code, but there's a two-year requirement before...
The PUD requirement?
Yes, thank you.
I'll let Mike speak to that.
Thank you.
Real quickly, Eric, there was one additional condition that I don't think got copied in the staff report, and that was about lighting on the site. We had restrictions on light pole heights. I don't know if you covered those, but 15-foot tall for pedestrian lighting and 20-foot-tall poles for parking lot lighting, black chem fixtures matching that on the building also. Getting to your question about the previous approval, Eric did state that the original concept plan was approved on March 26, 2007, and the final development plan was then approved on September 24 of 2007, so roughly six months later, they did get a final development plan approved. That final development plan had a number of conditions. The most significant was the requirement that no development could commence until there was a, until there was an agreement for construction of the storm sewer in Wallace Lane. And back at that time, it was about a $600,000 storm sewer project, and the preliminary terms of agreement were on the agenda and approved, and that was roughly a one-third, one-third, one-third share between the city, the school district and the developer. There was never an agreement finalized for that sewer construction, and so, I mean, based on just that, they couldn't proceed with construction. Back in 2010, the planning commission did have discussion about whether or not the proposed project should be reheard or a hearing should be held on whether to void the existing PUD. Ultimately, there is a code section, 134-708 of the code, that states that if the developer fails to submit a final development plan within two years of approval of the concept plan, or to commence construction in accordance with the schedule outlined on the development plan, the commission shall schedule a public hearing, and at that hearing, they have to consider all circumstances relevant to the developer's failure and may, or shall vote to recommend what to do with that, what measures to take. And those measures may include rezoning of the property back to R160 zoning district or referral of it to the legal department for enforcement. The first condition of failure to submit a final development plan was not applicable. They did submit a final development plan six months after the concept plan was approved, so that criteria was not met. The failure to proceed with development, we advised the planning commission on May 20th that there was... Staff was not aware of any previous action to void a planned unit development taken by the planning commission or the city. We have numerous PUDs, and I know in at least the last 13 years, there's not been any action to avoid a PUD. And on June 3, we advised the commission, staff advised the commission, that there was a new owner developer, Ewing Development, eminent. The developer had already scheduled a pre-application meeting for June 15 of that month, and we'd also advised Ewing Development and the planning commission that any amendments to the PUD would not be approved administratively. So this was all in response to this question of whether or not to void the existing PUD. And then finally, we kind of urged the planning commission that it was our staff's preference to have one hearing on a revised plan versus a hearing on whether or not to avoid the existing plan and then come back, you know, after that with another hearing to approve a new plan for the property. The commission at that time agreed with our recommendation, and you indefinitely delay, or the commission at that time indefinitely delayed the hearing for reconsideration. We, the actual, the actual transfer of the property did not occur until December of 2010. There were a couple of things that causes for that. One, the previous developer, there were state issues, obviously, with completion of the project that were tied up in court proceedings, as well as a lawsuit against the school district on the sale of the property. That lawsuit was not ruled on until 2009, so at least three years after the development plan was approved, there was still debate over whether or not the property could be sold, so no developer could have proceeded with development of the property until there was clear title presented and transfer of property occurring. So circumstances that the commission would have to, staff believes staff would, or that the commission... or that the commission would have had to have taken into consideration to void the PUD, included that the fact that the council's approval of that final development plan prohibited any commencement of construction until there was an agreement on the sewer, which was never reached. The estate issues of the developer, which prevented the execution of, in agreements regarding transfer of the property, as well as prevented consultants from completing work on the, on the project. That no developer would have commenced construction prior to March or April of 2009 due to the lawsuit on the sale of the property. There also was a historic downturn in the economy, which would have affected financing for part of that time. And finally, when the lawsuit was settled and the school district was allowed to sell the property, there was a public bid. There were multiple parties that, that bid, at least two. One of those was a group that was a predecessor of Friends of Rice Field, it was, I believe, Save the Green, various entities at that time, they both bid on the property. Ewing Development had the highest bid, $285,000. The property, they won the bid, the school district sold them the property, and as Eric indicated, it was transferred on December 15 of 2010. So with that, ultimately, it takes the council, it's the city, to take action to avoid a PUD. The commission elected to defer any action for multiple reasons. The council did not direct any action to be taken to avoid the PUD. So tonight, we're sitting here with a still-approved planned unit development concept plan, and the item before you tonight is to, it's not a rezoning of the property, and it's not a comprehensive plan amendment tonight. The zoning is, is PUD, and it remains PUD. The comp plan amendment was for a mixed-use commercial and low-to-medium-density residential designation. This plan eliminates any commercial proposal on the property. The entire PUD had residential on it, even above the commercial uses, and now it's a 100% residential project, so it does not require a comp plan amendment, does not require rezoning, it is simply consideration of a new concept plan for the property, and that's what's in front of you tonight.
Any questions? Greg, feel something?
Yeah, Mike, is there a point in this process, or has it already happened, where this would go through the urban design review board?
Couldn't hear your question.
The question was if the plan would be required to go in front of the urban design review board.
The new proposed plan has no city financial assistance in the project. The conditions state that the developer's responsible for installing the sewer, the developer's responsible for installing the streetscape. There, there is no city financial assistance in the proposal as presented, so it would not go before the urban design review board under that circumstance.
Any other questions?
One, one more.
Go ahead, Greg.
If, if the board were to so choose, could that be requested?
I think that...
And, and let me add to that. The reason I'm asking that is that I've never seen so many requirements, and many of these have to do with architectural comments and guidelines, which I'd love to sit up here and talk about ad nauseam with all of you, but that, that is what that board does, and so I'm just asking, would that be an option if this board were to so choose?
I would have to defer to the legal department staff to advise on whether that is. The way the code is written is final development plan is an administrative review. On the previous project, when there was, previous concept plan, on the approved concept plan, when there was city financial assistance in the project, I mean, the council even and commission recommended it come back to the commission and the council for review of that final development plan. From, from staff's perspective, we tried to look at the conditions that were on the previous approval and try and carry that same level of finish, and, and we anticipated there would be a lot of questions about design, et cetera, so we were probably on this project more specific on our conditions of exactly what we were wanting, but we were following the existing approved PUD as guidance for those recommendations. Again, I would defer to the legal department on whether or not you could propose a condition that have to go to the urban design review board.
Counsel.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the urban design review board, it's like some jobs descriptions. It gives them responsibilities that they're to have, and then instead of other duties as assigned, which we're all kind of familiar with, they can advise the city council on design matters. It would be highly unusual, but it is within their, their powers, but it would really be for the city council to refer it to them for review. My suggestion to you is if you believe that's, that there should be a further review of it, that ask the city council to also seek, seek review and comment from the urban design review board, might be part of your recommendation. It would be within the council's authority to refer it to the urban design review board and ask their opinions on it. I don't believe this board can directly send it there. Their, their, their other duties as assigned, that isn't the language that it uses, but it's, it's, they have authority to consider any matters that are referred to them by the city council.
Any other questions? Is the applicant present?
Yes, I saw the designer.
Please come forward, give us your name and address.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, Commission? Josh Cowman, 909 West 16th Street in Pella, Iowa, 50219, with Ewing Development and Beverdale Partners. I'm going to pull up our presentation here real quick.
Uh-oh. Do you want me to log in? Timed out. Mike, do you have to log in with this?
Yeah.
I was going to say, Mike, that doesn't look like Eric's.
Okay, so just to share a little bit here quickly about our team here tonight, got myself, Josh Cowman, as I mentioned, Sean Asmaw, our cooperative director, Roger Johnson with JSH Architects, and Eric Cannon with Snyder &amp; Associates, our civil engineer. They'll all be available for question if, if necessary on their items. A little bit about Ewing Development, we're a real estate development company based out of Pella, Iowa. Senior housing is our focus. We've done other development as well, but senior housing is really our focus. And the reason we do that, and the reason that we're passionate about senior housing is our founder, Jeff Ewing, his grandfather was paralyzed at the age of 38-years-old and lived the better part of his life when, when his wife could no longer take care of him in a nursing home. This is several years ago, obviously, but tiled floors separated by a curtain. And so Jeff Ewing, after leaving a banking career, set out to kind of develop senior housing where his grandparents could have lived together rather than grandma going back home to the farmstead alone, and so that's why we're passionate about senior housing. In particular, senior housing co-ops, which we recently started developing several years ago. I think, I think just simply calling it senior housing is kind of short-selling it. It's kind of a unique concept, and so I'll dig into that here really quickly. Housing Cooperative is a joint ownership and housing development in which members own a share. The members or shareowners are part of the cooperative corporation, which owns the building, land, and common areas. The land, or the cooperative structure brings back the spirit of community and sociability, democratic governance, and the participatory nature of the cooperative contributes to healthier living and enhances the lives of its members. Some community benefits, the seniors remain in the area to anchor the community's economic, social, and intergenerational foundations. The financial resources of the seniors' contributions are retained in the community, and then the resale of their homes into the cooperative obviously creates a ripple effect and creates, frees up some homes for first-time homebuyers or young families. And then cooperatives do pay full real estate taxes and create employment opportunities. So why a co-op for the members, and I'll be brief here, but members remain in control at a time of life when most other alternatives require sacrifice and control. They preserve their equity, there's no spin-down of assets. They preserve their tax benefits of homeownership. They save money through more efficient use of resources, and there's no profit to an outside owner. We simply act as the sponsor and the management company. It's a not-for-profit corporation that they run with boards, and so it's kind of a unique concept that way. And then they don't pay for services they don't want or need, and they enjoy improved health through daily participation in a community energized by that governance, those social activities, and the development of new friendships. It's an FHA HUD-insured master mortgage that they all participate in. There's one master mortgage, there's not individual mortgages. It's member-owned, member-controlled, as I mentioned. It's an affordable form of homeownership. Like I said, it operates not-for-profit, and I mentioned the tax benefits. The internal, external maintenance is included as part of their ownership, and then again, just promotes the ease of resale and community lifestyle. The PUD amendment that, that Mike spoke about, some of the concerns with the existing PUD concept plan, we're trying to address with our concept that we're offering for an amendment. So we're saving the existing trees at Beaver and Adams that Mr. Lundey mentioned, and throughout the site. We're going to allow for much more green space on the site than the approved PUD plan, sorry. Reduces the concern of some density. There was some concern about the commercial use and the potential vacancy with that space, considering the current vacancy in, in the area. The PUD amendment would also reduce the concern about increased traffic and noise. Senior housing co-op would be a pretty good neighbor versus the density of the commercial of the existing PUD. And then also, we are addressing the stormwater issues without the request for financial assistance from the city or burdening taxpayers. This is a quick snapshot that shows our exist, or our PUD that we're proposing versus the existing PUD. Just kind of highlights the amount of green space and trees that are retained on the site. It's not letting me go back. There we go. Oh, yep, it is. Okay. This is a conceptual site plan overlay that we've been working on as part of the project, but just to kind of show the amount of green space that is retained in the area, as well as those trees along Beaver and Adams avenues. There was some mention of the, the long list that we were provided from, from city staff. This actually is a first step in that direction, so fresh off the presses, our architect had basically taken the existing elevations and added the amount of brick that staff was recommending. So all that to say is the development group, even with that list of 20 items, we are in agreement and already in process on implementing many of those items. There's only a couple that we have, a couple of open discussion items on that we'll talk about here in just a minute. And with that, I think I will invite Eric Cannon with Snyder to address the stormwater improvements that we're making.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Eric Cannon, 2727 Southwest Snyder Boulevard, civil engineer on the project with Snyder &amp; Associates. And as Josh mentioned, we will be making a vast improvement to the area by handling the stormwater issue that I think bogged down the previous project. And I'll just kind of use my mouse pointer here. The site currently all drains to the north, and I'm not sure how many of you guys are familiar with the site, but there's about a four-foot retaining wall all along this north side here. There's two small drains right in this location here with an old tile that takes it underneath this sidewalk. There's a hole in the bottom of the curb that drains out into the street. That's how this entire site drains today. Recognizing that is obviously an issue with the development. There is no public storm sewer on Wallace, there's no public storm sewer on Ashby. The closest public storm sewer for the project is clear down here on 40th Place. There's a set of intakes, it then takes the stormwater and a pipe back through the rear yards of this property. So as part of the project, completely paid for by the developer, they will be handling all the stormwater from this property that currently drains over the retaining wall into these rear yards, containing that entirely on-site with a detention basin approximately in this location. And they will be installing storm sewer, directionally boring it through this alley out into Wallace Lane, and then installing concrete storm sewer pipe all along Wallace, along Ashby, and on 40th Place, and tying it into the existing storm sewer. So that is a vast improvement to the current conditions of the property, as well as to the storm sewer network that does not exist today on Wallace Lane. So that's, that's the storm sewer component of the project. I know one of the staff comments was to be specific about that nature. This is information we've presented at both of the neighborhood meetings we've had, been very open and honest. Staff's aware of this as well, but we will be providing more specific information to this as part of our PUD response. A couple of the other items that Josh mentioned, as far as we hit, we just wanted a little more, I guess, communication on, as part of the neighborhood meetings, we've been discussing with the neighbors, the general nature of the development. Currently, the property has a six-foot chain-link fence all along the east side and all along the north side of the property that is a remnant from when the school was there, would be my understanding. Specifically on the north side, that retaining wall that I mentioned earlier, that fence is cast into that retaining wall. The discussions we've had with the neighbors as part of the neighborhood meeting is that a lot of them would not like to have a six-foot cedar fence. It feels closed in, boxed in. They enjoy, they enjoy the sightlines now. So as part of our PUD, what we did note in there specifically is that we are purposely not having provided that six-foot cedar fence as part of the project in response to the, the feedback we got from the neighbors at the meeting. So that's one condition that's currently in the staff recommendation that we would, I guess, request be removed from the staff recommendation. The developer has openly committed that if any of these neighbors would like to have their fence replaced, brought up, currently dressed up or anything like that, they would be willing to, to make that improvement. But the fully opaque cedar fence was something that was not very well-received by the neighbors, so. The other item of discussion, maybe just to step back if I can. Whoops, am I going the wrong way? I guess I could probably do it on there. I was going to go back to the...
Which one are you going to?
I guess, currently, the, one of the other requested items is the 20-foot buffer on both the north and east property line, and I think maybe, I think maybe this might show it better. What we did is, part of the concept plan, these are the same plannings that are shown on the concept plan that you guys have in your packet. We took the requirement for the number of overstory evergreen trees per 100 linear foot, took that total quantity of plant material, and we did incorporate that into the entire northern perimeter and eastern perimeter of the project. We do only have this parking lot approximately 10 feet off that property line, and the main reason for that is if we did push this down 20 feet, it would result in this building encroaching into these two existing evergreens here. And the main, one of the main components that the developer provided to us was that they did not want to impact any of the existing trees on the property, they wanted to maintain all of them. So this was one compromise that we identified as part of the, the concept plan was to be able to protect these trees along Beaver and Adams. We needed to be a little bit closer here than what we normally would want to be and what you're currently requesting. We are providing the same number of plant material, the same quantity of plant material, we're just only 10 feet off the property line here versus 20. So that'd be another item of consideration we would request as part of the staff recommendations. But as Jeff alluded to, other than that, I know this is an extensive list, it is very specific to what you normally would see on a PUD, but we are in agreement with all the items and would request your guys' approval. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions?
Yeah.
CJ.
I, I have a question. You mentioned retaining the trees on the property, but you also mentioned this extensive storm sewer. How many trees will be removed in that storm sewer project that you're talking about?
I would not anticipate removing any.
Is it going down the street, or?
Yeah, it would go down right along the edge of the curb line. We would have to remove a portion of the street. Everything would be done within the right-of-way, it would not be done in private property, it would, would be retained within the public right-of-way of Wallace.
Okay. And then I have another question for the other gentleman. Are you using, are you trying to achieve any lead specs in this building at all?
You know, we, we always try to be as, as green as possible in our development, just practices in general. We meet several of them just by the way that we build our projects anyway, but we don't really approach the points because we're not gaining enough anyway to kind of gain any of the, the benefit or, or things of that nature. any of the benefit or things of that nature. There again, too, the co-op members, those costs are fronted by the members themselves who own the building, and so we try and be as conscious as possible to still keep the project affordable. So right now, no specific lead standards, but when I talk to my general, we always, we do, we could probably provide a list of the things that do fit that would be considered lead certified, but we don't try and get the standard.
Okay. Are there condo association fees associated with this?
So there's a share price that the members pay, and then there's an ongoing monthly fee that covers the existing master mortgage, property taxes, and things of that nature. And then it's 50% of that monthly fee, then it's tax deductible as part of that co-op concept. As part of this process, we are required to be 60% pre-reserved, basically, to start construction because of the HUD process. And so we have had a couple of initial, in fact, one, and then another one today, informational meeting, and we are currently 38% reserved on the project. So there's been a lot of interest from the neighbors.
This is my final question. Is this called the Vintage? Is that the name of the?
Yeah, Vintage Park Cooperative.
I don't know. I consider myself vintage. I don't know if I'd be interested in moving into a building called Vintage. I just pass that along.
Too many vintage people on the board.
Couple of questions. First one is, I don't remember which number it was, but one of the comments from staff was about creating a significant entry off of the Beaver side or Beaver Avenue side and going out to Beaver. The current site plan seems to be extremely inward focused. What are your thoughts on that?
If I'm hearing your question right, that was one concern of ours, just from a building security standpoint. That access point there is kind of the community gathering room and generally a courtyard area anyway. So I think that we can kind of enhance that and obtain what the city is requesting there. But I think there was another part to your question that I may have...
Well, I wish I knew which number. Eric, which number was it? It was six.
Seventeen.
I'm sorry?
Seventeen.
There we go. But there, I mean, staff says a predominant building entrance feature. My hope is that if you did that, it wouldn't be a faux feature, but it would actually be a building entrance. And so I'm, are you suggesting you wouldn't? That's something you want to discuss with them and work out?
Right. The main entrance will obviously be around the other side of the building. That could be a secondary entrance. We already do kind of a courtyard covered area in that place anyway, so I think, just from a standpoint of what we do, generally, it's going to look, it's going to hit the requirement that the city is asking for, recommending.
Are you willing, then, to still provide access points out, or not necessarily because of security?
Yeah, so we do provide access. It is a secured building. There are security cameras and things of that nature, and there's, you know, secured access, so that wouldn't be a huge issue there.
Do you have any concerns with the numerous comments that talk about craftsman style?
No. We kind of try to fit in as best we can in the communities that we come into. Craftsman is pretty vague. That'd be my only, you know, comment there. We ran into that. We did a craftsman style, I think it was called arts and crafts style in our Ankeny project in the Prairie Trail Development, and they had an extensive pattern book, you know, and we were able to kind of follow those guidelines and...
Okay.
So, yeah, no problems.
Thanks.
Kristi.
So as a, this sounds like a condo concept, sort of, right?
That's a swear word with my marketing group, but yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes. There are some differences between the co-op and the condo, but yes, that's very...
For me, cooperative, that's a lot of package. But anyway, and this isn't, then, a low-income project in any way, correct?
Yep. There are minimum requirements, not maximum requirements, in order to live in it, so yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question. I'm looking at this, nice concept, and you hear from the Bryce, people respecting Rice Field, why don't we just flop the building? I mean, couldn't we have put the building to the back and leave the field open?
So, we considered all those options, in my opinion, though. That was actually probably a worse approach because you're really blocking, you know, you're really, those people's backyard view then is going to be that three-story building, whereas the way the ground sits now and sits kind of low off of Beaver, it really allows us to kind of take that structure and almost shrink it a little bit and build it into that hillside. And so it really provides better sight views for the neighbors doing it this way, and it also kind of keeps in line with some of the urban design standards of hiding the parking from Beaver, you know, and driving down Beavers. They're going to look pretty impressive, I think.
Okay. Any other questions? Anything else?
Nope.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? In favor of the application, please come forward, give us your name and address. You'll need to sign in afterwards.
My name is Pam Nagel. I live at 4045 Adams, Des Moines, 50310-4057. I have the longest contiguous lot line with the property, and I'm right here. Oh, you can't see that, I'm sorry.
We've got to switch it.
I'm right here. This is me. I'm one of the people who asked to not have the fence, and I did read in the recommendations, I printed off all, many pages and read them all, that the first 30 feet should be three foot high and then go to the six foot. Well, right now, my biggest concern, first of all, is the sewage, and I think this is an excellent idea. I'm glad that someone's finally addressing it after the city and the school district didn't for the last 100 years, so I'm glad it's being addressed by the developer at their cost. I have two concerns in addition to that. One being the fence. For years, I have, ever since the school went down, and that's in the rear window, and I'm not looking back, but ever since then, you'll note that, right here, the wind blows across, and I have snowdrifts that are hot, four-inch snow with wind, which is usually in Iowa. I have snow that tops the four-foot fence and hides my driveway. I shovel out in the morning, I shovel out in the evening. I shovel through the night. And so my, and when the school district put up a new fence, we went to the plan and zoning, or the board of adjustment, and Mr. Bulkey, in his wisdom, said, absolutely not. You have to have that fence, and you have to have those little strips. And I said, well, would you put up a snow fence and back farther from it? Absolutely not. So I've continued to fight that for the last, ever since. God was a baby and the school went, and I'm tired of it, and so I talked to the first developer, and now I've talked to this developer, and I don't want any fence. I'd rather have the leaves blow by, I'd rather have the snow blow by, deal with that as it comes. I'm tired of all of this stuff. The other part that I am concerned about, I'm so glad they're going to save the trees, but I will tell you that if they start planting six trees along this portion right here, they're going to change and interfere with the trees that I already have, five, four mature trees along there that I planted. I am a certified nursery man, and I planted species that at the time I thought would be okay, one being an Emerald Ash, which may go the way of all things. But anyhow, so I would hope that there would be some leeway for them to work with the plantings that are already on, almost on the lot line now that they've gotten big in 23 years, that they be allowed to be flexible in how they plant. Because if they go and plant right next to my trees, first they're going to cut the roots, and secondly, they're going to interfere with the growth habit of both the new trees and the old trees. The last thing I would say is that the only tree, and I know that Skip Moore in the city council, who used to be the arborist, and I've known for over 40 years, there's one tree out here, right about here, that needs to go, and it's called a birder or pincherry. And the power company, in keeping the lines clear, has done their best to deform that tree, which is a dog tree in the first place. It's a dirty tree, it's a filthy tree, and it needs to go. And right now, it's an eyesore. So I hope that you don't fight with them about taking down that tree, because in all good wisdom, it should go. And your question, I believe it was you, CJ, that had a question about the ash trees back here in the corner where the retention pond is. I have a personal interest. I hand-budded those trees and grew them from a whip. I chose the tree they came from, I grew the trees, and they were planted there as a memorial. However, that was before the Emerald Ash bore. So if they should go in the retention thing, I will feel bad because I personally budded them in 1981, and those are my babies. But, you know, things go, things come, things go. At least we're not filled with Dutch Elms and American chestnut anymore. So some things will come back and replace. It just takes time. Thank you.
It's not here yet, though. It's getting closer. I'm looking at my, does my Emerald Ash crew go?
Any, anyone else to speak in favor of the application? In favor of the application, please come forward. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? And I know we have a number of people, and we're going to ask you to line up on the wall and state your name and address, and we want you also to sign in at the desk after you... You can go ahead and come forward, sir, and then sign in after you're done.
Can we remove this? I have a few words that represent several people that could not be here tonight and that are here tonight. I'm wondering if you would indulge me with a few extra minutes?
Well, I get...
Or the people behind me would relinquish their five minutes apiece so that I could finish this.
All right, and I guess what I'm trying to find out is who's willing to relinquish time for this gentleman to speak in addition. Okay, that means you guys wouldn't speak then, you understand that, and you're okay with that?
I'm all right with that.
I mean, they're okay with that. Yep.
Do you need three speakers? If it's a 15-minute speech, that would be three people, right?
That's correct.
So then other people could still speak.
Other people could still speak.
I was here seven years ago. Some new faces, some old faces.
Who are you? What's your name?
My name is Richard Jewitt. I live at 2422 Maryland Pike. I've lived there for over 40 years. I represent people with Friends of Rice Field signs in their yards and more. I represent Rice Field, who cannot speak for itself, but it shows us how it feels by its beauty. Zoning is about balancing stability with change. We should attempt to preserve the best features of our community while progressively upgrading features that are in need of improvement. Zoning is also about the welfare of our community as a whole and not about the welfare of any one property owner or even a group of property owners. The Iowa Supreme Court instructs us, a property owner does not have a vested right in the continuation of a particular zoning classification. In reviewing an ordinance, we are predominantly concerned about the general purpose of the ordinance, not any hardship that may result in an individual case. Quality Refrigerated Services Incorporated versus the City of Spencer, 586 Northwest Second, 202. The Iowa Legislature tells us Section 18B1, Iowa Smart Planning Principles, seven. Community character, planning, zoning, development, and resource management should promote activities and development that are consistent with the character and architectural style of the community and should not respond to local values regarding a physical character of the community. In order to decide whether a zoning change in a developer's mind fosters the welfare of our community, we should have a good understanding of where we have been and the direction the community wishes to go. In regard to the present request for a zoning change, an ordinance of the City of Des Moines makes the history of Rice Field particularly relevant to our discussion this evening. The ordinance that requires an evaluation of the history of Rice Field is, as you said, Section 134708, failure to submit development plan or to commence construction. If the developer either fails to submit a development plan within the time requirements of the Section 134696 of this division, or to commence construction in accordance with the time schedule set forth in the development plan, a public hearing shall be scheduled before the Plans and Zoning Commission regarding such failure, and the developer shall be served prior notice, therefore by certified mail. At such meeting, the commission shall consider all circumstances relevant to the developer's failure and shall vote to recommend to the city council that appropriate remedial measures be initiated, which measures may include the initiation of rezoning of the subject property to the zoning classification effective immediately prior to the rezoning of the subject property to a PUD classification, and referral of the matter to the legal department for institution of enforcement, proceedings, and the courts pursuant to Section 134-1-31, 134-32. Upon receipt of the recommendations of the commission, the city shall act to initiate remedial measures in conformity to the commission's recommendations or to initiate such other remedial measures as the council determines to be reasonable, necessary under the circumstances. So we believe that the issue before the board is what remedy should be recommended to the city council for the PUD mixed-use classification placed on the property. The Iowa Supreme Court guides us by the following requirement. Zoning must be in accord with a comprehensive plan. Holland versus City Council of Decoras, 622 Northwest Second, 681, 685 Iowa 2003. Iowa Code, Section 414.3, requires that zoning regulations should be made in accordance with a comprehensive plan. Wolf versus the City of Eli, 493 Northwest Second, 846, 847 Iowa 1992. SOCA versus the zoning board of adjustment of Harlan, Number 5-062/03, 1227 Iowa 2005. As in the SOCA case, in Beavardale, there has never been a suggestion that the zoning area R1 residential district was not in accord with a comprehensive plan. We appeared before this body previously in opposition to the last request for a change in zoning to the planned unit development mixed use. In a nutshell, our arguments were that this portion of Beaver Avenue was designated a residential protected corridor by the comprehensive plan. And for a litany of reasons delineated in the city's comprehensive plan, zoning should be restricted to R1 single-family dwellings. The primary reason is that apartments and commercial infill adjacent to large, single-family homes built as early as 1915 with large front lawns were best served according to the comprehensive plan by R1 infill. Apartments and commercial buildings would lead to degradation of the R1 housing and eventual loss of the residential corridor. The benefit of a residential corridor over a commercial corridor is that it introduces the residential nature of the community, slows traffic, and is pedestrian-friendly. From the perspective of Beavardale as a whole, the current PUD violates every zoning principle articulated in the comprehensive plan designed to protect single-family residential neighborhoods. It is noteworthy to remind this board and the public that Rice Field had been designated as a public park by a duly constituted government entity. Accordingly, the last time we appeared before this board, we gave an exhaustive presentation of the benefits of urban parks, what Rice Field offered. Based upon research of the National Trust of Public Land in Washington, DC, the research found unequivocally that urban parks have a transformational effect on urban living for the better. They increase property values, encourage community renewal, and provide cohesiveness. They promote wellness, both physical and psychological. The overwhelming evidence gathered by research around the country, as well as Iowa law and our city ordinances, prove beyond doubt that a park or schoolyard is the best use for Rice Field, as it has the potential to provide for the welfare of the community in diverse ways. It is obvious that if land is, if parkland is developed, the development that results will diminish home values as well as the well-being of the community. Further, it is well documented that the healthy urban living requires 10 acres of parkland per 1,000 population. Beavardale Ward One Northwest Beaverdale Ward One Northwest Ward has the least amount of public parkland in the metro area with 2 acres per thousand. The Northeast Ward has 9 acres per thousand population. The Southeast Ward has 14 acres per thousand population. And the Southwest Ward has 42 acres per thousand population. The Iowa Supreme Court considers a PUD to be zoning, period. An amendment to a PUD is a change in zoning. The process the City of Des Moines utilized when approving the change in zoning for the current PUD mixed-use was to change the underlying zoning and then enact the PUD mixed-use one minute later. The two steps to this are effectively a single action in order to change the zoning from R1 to PUD mixed-use. We urge the Board to recommend that the zoning return to the classification before the PUD mixed-use was adopted and returned to R1 residential. There are Supreme Court cases that support that. Finally, a quote, "amendment to the PUD," unquote, "does not comport with the comprehensive plan and does not serve the welfare of the neighborhood." The only poll of the community ever made was the Scientific Estman Survey, which showed that 75% of the community wanted an enhanced park at Rice Field, and 67% wanted it left alone, green space. The Beaverdale complete, the Beaverdale community completely rejected senior housing as a use for Rice Field. Senior housing was said to be not in a good fit for the community. In fact, Ewing Developments were not even allowed to present their proposal at a meeting held at Hoover High School where the six plans that were proposed for Rice Field were to be considered by the citizens. A single-use, multi-residential block building with its back to the community, where trees are not planted to separate pedestrians from traffic, implements no principles of the comprehensive plan relating to a residential neighborhood predominantly in R1 in nature. Under the new proposal, Rice Field would go from an open-to-the-public designation to being closed to the public. Finally, additionally, senior housing is not needed in Beaverdale. Only 5% of the elderly leave their homes. The overwhelming numbers within this 5% are people with chronic health problems and/or physical or psychological problems. 55-year-olds and other healthy seniors are not leaving their homes in significant numbers. I thank you for your attention.
Any questions? Thank you.
We have a number of signed petitions that we're turning in now.
Okay, your ask can be received and filed by the clerk.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And we're going to pass it around, Kathy, before. Thank you. Anyone else here to speak in opposition to the application? Please come forward and remind those three who took their turn down to do that. Bruce, why don't you give us your name and address?
Mr. Chairman, my name is Bruce Butler. I live at 2420 Beaver Avenue, Des Moines, 50310. I do have a question first of the developer, and that is, he said that he had some people sign up. Does he have any idea what the ages of those people are?
You might, you might lay that on the floor, but we're not going to, he's not going to address those right now. He can do that in rebuttal time.
Okay. But there, there is a statistic out there that 90% of the people that go to assisted living are 90 years old. I, you know, I'd be interested, this, the target for this development is 55. I don't see any 55-year-olds going to this development. I know I have a client that's interested in it that is over 80, and I, and I wonder whether this, whether this senior housing is appropriate for, for the age demographic, but at any rate. I've read every single case that mentions a PUD, appellate case that we have in Iowa. And the first thing is, is that every time a PUD has been accused of spot zoning, the Iowa Supreme Court or the Court of Appeals has said, yes, a PUD is spot zoning, every single time. But, they have said, spot zoning is not the end of the question. The question is whether it's illegal spot zoning. And illegal spot zoning is dependent upon whether or not it comports with the comprehensive plan, whether it supports the community welfare. So, when you, it is doubtful, Mr. Ludwig's opinion to the contrary, it is doubtful, I think, that the Iowa Supreme Court is going to allow a city to place a PUD on an area and then have carte blanche forever on what goes inside that area. That essentially, by classifying it as PUD, removes it from 150 years of zoning law. And that ain't going to happen. And this is, to change this from a PUD mixed-use to a PUD single-use is a, is a conceptually substantial change, and it is, it is, it affects the, whether it is in conformity with the, with the character of the community and whether it's in the best interest of the community, both questions that the Iowa Supreme Court asks when it determines whether a change in zoning is legal or not, or whether the spot zoning is legal or not. And, and so, for those reasons, I think that this Board should, as, as Richard Jewitt requested, go with the recommendation that this, this PUD be returned to R1 zoning and we start, and we start afresh from the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce, before you leave. Any questions? Thank you. If anyone else is speaking in opposition, please come forward, give us your name and address.
Nancy Stillions, 1604 24th Street Place. I am not a Beaverdalean, but I have been following this matter since 2003. And I have been aware of not everything, but most...
Go ahead, ma'am. I'll just...
Well, I, I value the attention of that. I was impressed earlier in the week when I went to the meeting in Beaverdale with the team presenting this plan. It seemed, of the many plans I've seen, an honorable plan. I was alarmed, though, Chairman, when you said everything has to have to do with this. Because your decision tonight is going to be one that, if it is simply on all of these details and all these little ordinances and so on, it is not going to be a decision that is the right decision. At, what we don't know is what hurts us in many cases. And there is so much that is not known about this whole, this whole Rice Field issue that, rather than get into those things, I would simply say you cannot be doing the right thing if you allow this now at this time. I respect this Board. I think it's the best Board in the city. But when you don't have the information you need, or when you are lied to, as you were last year, a little later in the year, about this time, but just in time to get the great big development through the year, before the end of the year, you did not know what you were doing. You didn't know the facts. You didn't know you were being lied to because nobody was there aware that the thing was happening. So, I'm talking about a different, so I'm not talking about this, but I'm talking about a different gigantic development that I think probably took about at least 150 hours out of my life and angst hours, and would have changed totally the nature of the neighborhood and caused a group of us to have to go to the Iowa Finance Authority and testify to head it off. Now, this one doesn't require that, so we don't have the opportunity. This one looks as though it might be a decent plan. But I would like to think that Mr. Ewing would want to know, want to know what had gone on. There have been at least seven instances of officials committing malfeasance in this, elected officials and hired officials. So, I think I, you know, there's no point in going on and on. Rice Field was a public field. That was the way it was supposed to be. When Rice School was torn down, the political pot had started to be stirred. And I will finally probably write, if not a novel, but at least something that will bring all the facts into this, if, if necessary. But I would say, delay is not going to hurt anything. These people are good people with their plan. They have a good plan, and they are going to be paying for it. So, it isn't the taxpayers that are being cheated when something goes between 32nd and 33rd on Forest. But this does not need to happen right away. And anyone who wants more information, I will be happy to provide it, or I will ask you to read the 75-page, I think it was 75-page chronology on the whole issue.
Ma'am, we're going to give you about one more minute.
What?
One more minute.
Oh, well, that, I, you get the idea.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in opposition? Please come forward, give us your name and address.
Jim Johnson, 1918 Avalon Road. I've been following this since the beginning, and I don't know what I'm doing here, but I'm trying to provide a larger picture. And if any of you think that the clash of developers and advocates of green spaces is just common to this room, it isn't. You can think of, Tahir Square comes to mind, and Zuccotti Park, and a whole host of other, basically clashes between people and developmental issues when developers want to tear down the park and develop it. And I'm also thinking, my wife and I travel to Paris once in a while, and we stay in sort of a not very snooty neighborhood, and pretty middle-class, a lot like Beaverdale. Anyhow, across the street from our hotel, and the street's no wider than Beaverdale, two lanes, across the street and through a stone portal in the block of apartments across the street from us, probably less than 100 yards from my front door, there's a Roman arena that has been there for thousands of years, and it's a square, probably the size of Rice Field, sort of depressed. Everything goes on in there, street theater, soccer games, fashion model shoes, anything you can see. Anyhow, the thought that someone would go in there and decide to develop that, it wouldn't happen. We wouldn't be having this discussion. And the other thing I just want to say is, is there's something a little perverse about our rush to eliminate public spaces, spaces where people can gather together, kind of like this room here, where we could all stand around and hear whatever everybody has to say, and that's all that I have. Thank you.
Before you leave, any questions? Thank you. Anyone else here to speak in opposition to the application?
My name is Diane Cabetta. I live at 4004 Amick Avenue in Des Moines. I come before you humbly. We've come before the City Council, Plan and Zoning, developers, various groups, and, as the gentleman said, we've been doing this for seven years. I'm tired. I worked 12 hours yesterday. I'd like to be home this evening after work. But we come because we feel that our community is going to be seriously violated, and there are some decisions that need to be made by our public officials. We're told by the developers that they know, you know, this is needed in our community, and others in positions of power making decisions have tried to tell us what is best for us, for our children, and for our community. And I'm coming from the community to tell you, we've been trying to talk to you for a long time, and I know the Plan and Zoning Board was favorable the last time we were before you. It went on to the City Council, and some decisions were made there. I don't believe that it's ever too late to right a wrong. And I hear talk, well, we've already decided this, nobody did this, city manager says the train is moving, it can't stop. That is not true. When we see that something is not right and that there has been an injustice, and people's welfare and well-being is not being respected, we need to stop in this community, and we need to listen to the people who are crying out to us. I'm sure that the developers are wonderful people, talented. But I'm hearing all the talk about the windows, all the wonderful quality building materials. But I say to you, if this development needs all this extensive buffering from the community, why does it need that buffering? Because it's not right for the community. I hear talk about the water. Now, I know that the engineer was not here, so I don't fault him for that. But Bill Stowe, highly respected in this community, stood before one of the deciding groups and said, "Rice Field is a big green sponge, and if left alone, there will be no need to mitigate any water problems." Water is flowing also off of Beaver Avenue, because all of Beaverdale has stormwater issues. Rice Field is not causing them. When we put a structure on Rice Field and we put all the pavement, well, that's when there is going to be a need to mitigate it. And you've, you know, we talked about how expensive that's going to be. Most neighbors surrounding that field have signs in their yard saying no to development across the street on Beaver and around the periphery of that field. Now, some people have said, well, yes, we've seen some signs, but how come we're not seeing more? Well, because it costs money to put up signs, to pay for signs. But the people around that field have shown how they feel. And we're talking about fences.
Ma'am, we're going to give you about one more minute.
Okay, I'm almost finished here. I'm not angry. I've been called an angry woman because I've exercised my right of free speech. I've spoken for the young people and adults in that community who use the field. And I don't know what more we can do. Get down on our knees and beg? Our city leaders and people in positions of power are not listening. That is a century, over a century green space. It was a covenant with a community, not unlike the square in Pella, Iowa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. So, anyone else in opposition? Please step forward, give us your name and address. We're going to ask everybody who's, wants to speak to move over here to the right. Yeah, you don't need to sign in right now, ma'am. Just give us your name and address, and then you can sign in after you're done. Just give us your name and address and then you can sign in after you're done.
My name is Sharon Iverson. I live at forty-one twenty Amick in Des Moines, Beverdale. And I got involved in this years ago as a voice for the children. And they're not here tonight. And who, who represents the kids? The hundreds of kids, the years of kids, the decades of kids that have used this field and would like to continue to use the field? Who, who speaks for them? Is it gonna be fifty-four people that fill up their playground in a senior living center when we have four already in Beverdale? Calvin Manor has tore down houses. There's more land available for Calvin Manor. We have now another field that was built with senior housing at Franklin Field, lost, you know, to recreation for the kids. We've lost Prospect Park. All our kids, they tell us, you're supposed to go to Hoover High School. You know, you're supposed to go out of Beverdale to find a place to play for your sport. And, you know, we have this field that was the creation of our community in nineteen oh nine, that the smartest city planning that still takes place today, you form a community around a green space and usually a public school. Well, we lost the public school. Do we have to lose, do we have to lose our village green? And, and who is going to, you know, which one of us is going to really think about the kids? And, and the joy that everybody gets from the kids? And not just the kids, but the young adults and the youth. And you cannot imagine the uplifting feeling when you're driving down Beaver Avenue and you see kids out there, people out there. It's, it's a glorious sight. It lifts your spirit and that is invaluable. It's so invaluable. And I guess I'm just beseeching for the better angels in us to look out for our community and the children. Thank you so much.
Anyone else to speak in opposition, please come forward. Give us your name and address.
My name is Jim Clark. I live at fourteen ten Beaver Avenue. I just have actually a couple of questions I didn't hear when, when the presentation was going. One, said there was no government involvement, so you could forego any architecture review or whatever. Is there tax abatement involved in this property?
I believe that they would be eligible.
But that would be government involvement.
But tax abatement does not require review by, on a residential project, does not require review by the Urban Design Review Board.
Well, a planned unit development is not residential. You change the zoning on the property.
It's a residential planned unit development that's proposed, concept plan.
I still think there's government involvement through its taxpayers. Involvement is us, the people in concern. That's something that can be determined by the folks here in the board. The other question I have is on parking. I didn't hear any, I saw the drawings and everything else. And all of a sudden I saw at the end drawing, there was a, seemed to be some added parking spaces along that entrance on Adams Avenue that didn't show up in the earlier drawings that they presented. So I'm a little confused and conflicted on the number of parking spaces that are gonna be available. And what the rule is on that. Because it's gonna be increased traffic. There's fifty-four units. If, if they happen to be rented to couples, you'd have a hundred and four people. And if you're like my wife, and I'm in that age group that they're gonna target to live there, my wife and I both drive cars. So even if half of those people had two cars, you'd be looking at, you know, seventy-five to eighty cars and that, that unit just in the residence coming in. And then you have visitors and they're, they're looking at children coming to visit on holidays. Where is the adequate parking gonna be at those times? Is it gonna be on the residential side, on Adams Avenue, in front of all the people's houses that need parking for their families that are coming in there? I think the, the parking didn't look adequate to me on that plan. And those are the only two questions I have. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. Please step forward. Give us your name and address.
Paul Milton, thirty-one eighteen Beaver Avenue in Des Moines. I live right across the street from the development. Not particularly in favor of it, but I have a question, I guess, about what could be done about the north entrance off of Beaver. My driveway is basically right across the street from it. So right now, we have a three-lane street with traffic goes each way and then a turning lane in the middle. Most people understand it. The people from out of town don't understand it. And I see all kinds of interesting things happen on it. My problem is, I have to watch both directions, including the turning lane. And now I'm gonna have to walk, watch across the street. And I don't know, I don't re, I'm not in favor of any more lights. I think we get plenty of lights, okay? But I just don't know how traffic, traffic is gonna work out, including truck traffic in and out of that entrance. And I don't know that there's another way of getting an entrance there. I know they have to have two, but I don't know what can be done. So that's my question or my problems.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Anyone in opposition, please step forward. Give us your name and address.
Hi, my name is Kevin Munyon. I live at thirty-one twenty-four Beaver Avenue. Mind if I bring up one of the pictures?
Was it in the slides?
Yeah, it's probably in the slides.
No, I think it was in the presentation.
Yeah, it was in the presentation. Okay, where's your slide at? What direction is it on here?
Site would be within the hatched area.
Okay. On, I live at thirty-one twenty-four Beaver Avenue, which is right here. And as Paul Milton, my neighbor, stated, we have a large entrance going into the property directly across the street. At the same time, you have neighborhood areas of Wallace Lane with all of this coming out on Beaver Avenue, right here. Ashby, Adam, Ashby and Adams. And on these properties along Beaver Avenue, it used to be Beaver Avenue had parking along the street. And so you could have, yeah, you had friends, neighbors, whoever came over. Then you used to have parking in the streets. Things were changed. Changed it into two directions with a turning lane in the middle and a bike path on either side of it. City took away any parking there. And these properties along here have driveways that have to be backed out of for the residents onto Beaver Avenue. And when you incorporate a commercial property with a large driveway with fifty-five units, then we're trying to back out onto Beaver Avenue with the traffic in the morning, you know, you'd be during, you know, Sundays is fine. But when you're talking about traffic hours from all residential, from new growth to the north end, doing Johnston, traveling down Beaver Avenue, coming from the north, you get a lot of traffic that's been building and building over the years. And to try to back out of your driveway onto Beaver Avenue and turn north or go south gets to be pretty tough as it is. And then you add in fifty-five units. And the commercial traffic that comes in. One thing I have a question on is, is Beaver Avenue a truck route? I don't believe that it is. And with the entrance off of Beaver Avenue for semis, for deliveries into this property, then they're going to exit onto Adams? Or they're gonna come, turn in on Adams, which has residential, and turn back out onto Beaver? Is that, is that, I don't believe that Beaver Avenue is a truck route for commercial, for semis, for doing deliveries? I just wanna bring that up to a point.
You have about one more minute.
I propose the, I don't want it, period. You talk about brick on, making it look nice with a brick on it. Well, that's on the side you can't see from Beaver Avenue. And people along the neighborhood, along the north and the east, it's their backyards. Okay? You drive down Beaver Avenue, you're not gonna see the brick. You're gonna see three stories of commercial construction or no brick on it. I believe that it ought to be flipped over around the other direction. Then you'll have a more open green space like you see right now as the park. I believe it ought to stay as a park because every, every day, there is community kids out there, soccer, airplanes.
Thank you, sir.
Everything. And I think you have.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think, will you heed to, a little more time for me?
We're not gonna, we're not gonna do that. If he, if he doesn't want, if he doesn't wanna speak, that's fine. If he doesn't wanna speak, that's fine.
I think there's a lot of people who'll give you time.
Sir, I'm gonna ask you to, sir, I'm gonna ask you to step down.
An hour later.
Sir, I'm gonna ask you to step down. Sir, I'm gonna ask you to step down.
Going across the street. I think you have the wrong type of materials on the backside of the property as it is.
He's asking you to step out of the podium, sir.
Okay, so please. Thank you. No, I'll go this way.
Please step forward. Give us your name and address.
Rob Schaffner, forty forty-six Wallace Lane. I'm gonna be brief. I agree with everybody on that that just spoken about the, the Rice Field situation. I play volleyball out there, or at least tried to with, with some people that are in their seventies. So it's not just kids using the field, it's, it's a lot of people. And it's a lot of people that are not in Beverdale. A lot of people we play with, for example, that live in Des Moines. But, but anyway, as far as the traffic, I just wanna mention one thing. I don't know if anybody realizes it, but there's a huge Hy-Vee that's going in very close to Beaver, to Rice Field. It's just, it's north, probably about a quarter mile, maybe a little bit more. And I don't know if people have thought about the traffic that's gonna create because that, that could definitely be something that people need to think about and it hasn't been addressed. And so in addition to the, this unit here, to have the Hy-Vee coming down a two-lane road is very problematic, I think. The only other thing I wanna do is put this on the screen.
Just go ahead and set it there.
Right there in the square area.
Right on top of the little template.
Anyway, this is just a recent picture of special Olympic kids practicing their football on Rice Field. So I just wanted to show people one of the examples that they choose for. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak in opposition to the application? In opposition? Is there anyone else who desires, who's gonna desire to speak in opposition? Would you please stand up? Okay, this will be the last one. Ma'am, if you please give us your name and address.
My name's Duanne Thorpe. Four zero four seven Ashby Avenue, which is the other half of the fork of Ashby Wallace Lane. I think everyone has spoken very well. I only wanted to add my comments relating to the traffic. I've lived in the same house since nineteen sixty-three. The traffic has gradually increased over the years. We have a lot of traffic coming directly down Beaver from Johnston. And if and when Hy-Vee goes in, that's going to greatly increase it. But to get out on the street, to go to work, has maybe thirty, thirty-five cars, maybe forty cars at the heavy times of day now. So I only ask you all to consider what it will be when the traffic from a fifty-four unit development on Rice Field is added to the mix. It's going to cause major traffic problems. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does the applicant need some additional rebuttal time? You have five minutes.
Yeah, we'll be brief. I did wanna share, though, that some of the concerns that were expressed tonight, we did address at both of our public meetings. And so in terms of some of the, some of the questions in terms of parking, you know, there's sixty parking stalls underneath the ground. And so that's why there's a, there appears to be a lack of surface parking is because so much of it is underneath the ground. The other thing with traffic, it's a, it's an independent senior housing cooperative. And so there won't be any large semi truck deliveries. And we did address that at our public meetings. And so it's, it's, there's, there's no commercial kitchen in the building. So there won't be, the only, the biggest truck that will be coming through, there would be a dump truck to gather the, the garbage, so. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
I have a question.
We need a motion.
Um, okay, I'll make a motion. That sounds like we failed to exercise our right to void the existing PUD back in June. And I'd like to make a motion that we do that tonight.
Motion to void the PUD. Duanne? Kane? You just called him counsel. That's, that's.
I asked him, can we do that? And he said, no, we can't. We, it only can come from the city council.
Well, we can recommend that the city council do that and have the public hearing to do that.
Counsel? You have it.
This is Chair, members of the commission. What is before you and what is on your agenda for you to act on tonight is an application for site plan approval. You can approve it, approve it with conditions, you can deny it. And if you're gonna do any of those three actions, I would ask that, that in your discussions of that, you would give the reasons for the decision that you're making. If you were to choose to recommend denial and to recommend that the city council initiate further action to rezone the property back to something else, again, I would ask that you would state the justification for that. There were statements made that I think I need to clarify. This board cannot consider this property to be public property. This is not public property. It was owned by the school board, it was sold to a private developer. The owner of this property has allowed people to use it, just like you might allow the neighborhood kids to use your front yard. That does not make it public property. It is not a public park. As a private property, they have the right to make a valuable, profitable use of their property. If we're going to deny this because we think it should be public property, the city council will know that that means we have to immediately buy it. And that, that is possible if we were to choose to do so. But I think the city council has repeatedly expressed its reluctance to do that. I would ask you to decide on the merits, based on the site plan regulations that have been identified in the staff report, does this meet the standards for, I said site plan, that is incorrect. A PUD conceptual plan that has made the characteristics of site plan. Apply the standards in the site plan or in the PUD ordinance that are identified in the staff recommendation and make the determinations to whether those standards are met. And if they're not yet to identify what standards aren't met, it's the basis for action.
Counselors, I understand that you're indicating that the motion that was previous on the floor is not in order.
You could ask, you could forward a recommendation to the city council that they consider initiating an action to rezone it. But I think you should also act on the application as before.
We have a motion on the floor, unless you wanna withdraw it. Well, a motion on the floor, unless you want to withdraw it? Just ask me. No? Okay. And if you would, restate that motion?
I guess he kind of said that I should give justification for that. I guess I don't feel that this is appropriate for the neighborhood. And, um, I think if we do deny it tonight, I think the city should reconsider buying the property. So I think that's a, something-
Well, I guess what I'm, I guess what I'm saying is, your motion was not to deny staff's recommendation.
Okay.
Your motion was-
I will restate it then.
Okay.
My motion would be to deny the request and to recommend to the council that they consider again purchasing the property. And prior to that, they probably need to have the public hearing to rezone or void the existing PUD.
Everyone understand the motion? Is there any discussion on the motion?
Can I discuss, please?
This is, this is your opportunity, Ted, go ahead.
I'm waiting for the mic to turn. Kind of a low talker. Would, would it accomplish the same thing if we, if we moved staff and, and then voted it up or down? So, or are you suggesting that, that we should? Is your motion to vote against staff? Because I think if we vote against staff, we just vote against staff if someone moves staff. And then to take up a separate, completely separate motion that suggests that we would recommend to council and, um, for those of you that don't know, the, uh, Plan and Zoning Commission makes recommendations to the city council. Nothing we do here is final, and we hear about that all the time, um, when the council does something different, and we don't like it either. But, um, so I, I guess I'm asking, could, could we, uh, thumbs up or thumbs down the staff recommendation, and then take up your motion separately?
That's a possibility. Is that the proper order in which to do things? I think that's what council was saying.
What I think Ted's saying is, you've got two, two motions, and you've already asked that we deny staff, that's a thumbs down type situation. And then you also want to take up another motion with respect to, uh, removing the PUD off the-
Recommending that the city council do that.
So why don't we take up your first motion? Everybody understand it? Is there any, any further discussion?
I'm gonna restate that.
Yeah, please.
I think your motion is to deny staff's recommendation.
Deny the proposal.
Deny the proposal.
Said, you could do the same thing by not raising your right hand if somebody moved staff.
Either, either way. It's, it's kind of in the negative, and I understand where you're coming from, but... Any, any further discussion?
So which one are we voting on?
We're gonna vote on whether or not we should deny staff's recommendation for the project.
So a vote in favor-
Is a vote to deny.
Right.
That's, that's kind of-
All those, all those- Counsel, did you, did you want to?
I just wanted to make it clear, though, that a motion has to pass when the majority votes. So if that motion were to not pass, it doesn't mean that Congress, it doesn't mean that it's approved.
Right. That's, that's, that's correct. That's correct. Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. One, two, three, four.
Okay, just a second.
Opposed, same sign. Eight. Yeah, the ones that are opposed. Okay. I'm looking for another motion.
Staff.
Okay. Removing staff? Any discussion? Seeing none? Greg, you have something?
You have a lot of thoughts. Let me see if I can formulate these. Um... I definitely get the impression, listening to everybody, and, and, and I understand your, your previous motion, but I get the impression that it's all or nothing. You know, it's one hundred percent green space, leave it the way it is today, or nothing. That there is no sort of, um, compromise in any way of any sort of development. And that's the impression I get, and I've, I've listened to these hearings before, even before I was on the board. And, um, so I just sort of put that out there to everyone. That's been my impression. The, the park, the, the traffic and the parking, I really sort of consider a mute point. Uh, my children played soccer on that field with, uh, Northwest Soccer Club. And anyone that's been to those soccer games knows that when you go to those soccer games, finding parking is very difficult. And I was often in your neighborhood, parking. And we were all trying to get back out on Beaver and do our thing, and so whether there's some elderly housing there or a soccer game, parking and traffic is there. So I don't know that that's a significant difference. Hy-Vee is another thing. I think what I would offer, just as thoughts to the developer, um, I personally think that this plan is significantly, significantly better than the previous plan. I think it's well thought out on a, on a number of things. There's a few things that I would offer as suggestions, depending on how this crazy process moves forward. First of all, I think some of the positives that you pointed out, I would agree with. Um, I, I think there's more green space, and the way you're handling what would probably be the water problem that you're creating, I, I think you're handling it well. And I think it's really good that you're not looking to, to ask for assistance or help with paying for that. I think the mass of the building is actually fairly consistent with some of the masses of buildings in that area, and, and I think you could probably do a better job of demonstrating that, whether it's the church, or the apartments, or even the Joe's Square, and some of those other projects around there. Um, and by, so moving it up on the street, to me, is an urban solution, makes sense. You're sort of putting those structures in alignment, if you will. The one thing that I think you, that you're, you're sort of short on is the, not only the perception, but the reality of the development connecting into the neighborhood and connecting into the community. Uh, everything from fences to trees, and I understand a lot of that, or, uh, PUD and recommendations from staff, and I, I understand that. But there's also just this, just the way the building sort of turns its back and the entry and all this stuff, there's this real perception that it's a very private inward thing. And, um, you know, my father lived in a community like this and loved to get out and walk, and people would walk around, and, and, and so I just think there's a way that the design of it could better, um, open itself up and integrate into the community in the way that walks centered it and came out of it and different things that, um, I think would be much better for the neighborhood as opposed to turning your back on it. Or at least, that's the perception I have. I would also, uh, encourage you to look at the idea of not using what I would consider to be a standard floor plan. Um, and, and I understand that floor plan to be very economical from a staffing point of view, and I fully understand that in my line of work. Um, but I think you have an extremely unique site, and, uh, maybe others are similar, but this one seems very unique. And so the, instead of a long shaped building, maybe it's more about a more compact building, a very different sort of concept that would allow significantly more green space to maybe the south. And, um, I, I just think there's some other ways to sort of look at that that would be really kind of out of the box, and it may not work, but I think there's some, some options there. Another positive is, I think, eliminating the retail, I think, is fantastic. You, you think you got congestion and traffic with this proposal if, if there were retail spaces. Um, and, and honestly, I think sort of the Joe's Square edge is about as far north as, as that really great area needs to go. So I think that was a positive. So I just sort of offer those up as thoughts. Do with what you'd like.
Christine?
First thing I'd like to say, and I'm just gonna offer more comments, um, this is a very challenging issue. And first, I would like to thank and just express my gratitude for the residents that have stuck in and really paid attention and given so much of your time over the years. I'm pretty new to this commission, only have a few years, but I know the history on this is long. There've been lots of twists and turns and lots of, you know, confusion and, you know, this is a, this, uh, is a complicated, um, matter with lots of different people having different opinions and feelings, too. As, um, a commissioned body, um, our decision-making, in my opinion, is, is pretty narrow, actually. And the things that we're asked to decide are, are pretty, you know, focused on some boundaries. But that being said, you know, hearing what folks have to say, and for me and people that know me professionally, I'm all about procedure. If there's any glitch in, you know, a hearing wasn't, you know, due process didn't play out, or, you know, whatever, I have a really serious problem with that. And it's made some of my decisions more complicated then. And so, again, I just want to thank, thank everybody that's, that's been involved in bringing more history to the attention of the commissions, commission members that are new.
Anyone else? Any other comments? Okay, seeing none?
Sorry, just, as I stated earlier in the beginning of this, I find just having nineteen or so items on this, the most I've ever seen, and I haven't been here that long, so maybe there's been some like this before. So I really feel like there's more work to do. If, if there is an assumption, if this moves forward as a development project, I think there's more work that should be done, and we shouldn't have nineteen items in front of us that need to kind of get worked out. I love staff, they do a great job, but, um, I think there's a little bit more work to do, and in that may be some more process. So I, I throw that out as a, a thought to everyone on the board, if, if anyone thinks that's appropriate or is interested in formulating a potential amendment.
Dan? I, I would just like to say, um, I think this is private property now. So speaking of this as a park is kind of irrelevant at this point. Hasn't the courts ruled that this is now sold property? They own it, and if they follow the rules, they can develop it. I guess I don't see that, that we have a choice in saying, you know, we'd rather see it green space. And, um, this neighborhood has two excellent parks, and I have to say, my neighborhood has zero. We even have zero building space. I mean, we have nothing. So, um, I commend you people for fighting for green space and, uh, but at this point, I'm struggling with the fact that this is private property. And until somebody does something to change that, and it would have to be council, it would have to be the owners selling, the courts deciding it, I don't think we as a commission can say retain green, green, green space. So that's my two cents. I-
Anyone else?
I would just like to reply to that. I agree that currently it is privately owned. However, I don't know off, from my memory, if I was at that meeting in June where we decided not to consider that.
It was June of 2010.
Okay, so I wasn't even on the commission at that time. I don't know the reasons that went into that. It sounds like they were waiting for these court cases to be resolved. They decided, let's let this play out and see how the chips fall when all the court cases are settled. Okay, so that came and went, and this commission never revisited that. So that's what I'm saying, is yes, it is private property, it is not a park, no, I'm not making that claim at all, I agree. What I'm saying is, this commission has a duty to follow the rules, and that is that this property was not developed in the timely manner that it was supposed to when the PUD was approved. So we do have the ability to go back and revisit that, and that's what, that's what my original motion was about. So we have the opportunity here to approve it or vote it down and exercise that right, that is, put one of the things that was, is within our realm to do, to recommend to the city council to do that.
Any other discussion? Seeing none? Are you ready to bring it to a vote, Jack, or do you have something?
No, I, I think, I think I know the answer to this. There was reference to approval of site plan and correction of the reference to approval of site plan. This is a zoning modification which will find its way to city council, no matter what we do.
That's correct. Any other discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand in favor of staff's recommendation.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Get it? It'd be easier to count the ones that aren't.
Okay.
All those opposed? CJ?
Seven to five.
Got it? Okay. Right. Staff recommended, staff's recommendation carries?
Mr. Chair, for the benefit of, of the commission and the people in the audience, we would anticipate that, uh, your recommendation would be forwarded to the city council on, uh, at their November fourth meeting to set a date of hearing. And if it would follow the same, uh, normal schedule, the hearing would be November eighteenth, uh, council meeting. So, um, I invite people to come to the public hearings, uh, when those are held. But again, November fourth would be a set hearing, would be normal procedure, set hearing only, and public hearing on November eighteenth. Thank you.
Mike Kevah. Thank you. Give director's report.
Uh, just one thing, uh, lunch with the city manager will be scheduled for tomorrow at noon, so we would need to know who would want to attend that luncheon.
I'm in, I hope. Depends on how my hearing is going. CJ? That's here. With the city manager. We're gonna ask everybody, if, if you want to talk, that's fine, we're just gonna ask you to step out so we can finish our business here.
They're remodeling the city manager's office area on the main floor, so we're actually in the basement, right beneath the city manager's office, regular city manager's office.
So we get lost, somebody correct this?
If you come in, if you come in the, the main doors, head down the hallway towards the city manager's office, there's a stairwell. It's right out here, too, but it goes down to the basement at noon. So I have CJ and Dan.
Anybody else?
Noon tomorrow.
Nope, okay.
Okay. That's it.
And then we want to bring up the, uh, meeting schedule for 2014. That's in front of you. We're not actually gonna take that up right now, we're just advising them, right?
You would be approving it.
We're gonna approve it?
The two dates that are highlighted here, March twentieth would be during the spring break period for Des Moines Public Schools, and then the July third would be the day before the city offices are closed, so.
In the past, those have been meetings that you've-
Those are trouble getting quorums on those two situations.
Right, so in the past, we just haven't had meetings on those dates. Okay. I think we need a motion for that.
So if you want to strike those, those?
Move it with the exception of two meetings that they've yellowed out, right?
And January second, there is no meeting.
January second's already struck.
Yeah. Is there any, any discussion with respect to that? Seeing none? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand, CJ? Here you go. Opposed, same sign? Okay, acclimated, yeah. Thank you. That having been said, we're adjourned.